Meeting of the Valley and Fighting Board. We have a rather robust agenda this evening, as usual. I would ask that when you do leave, try not to congregate outside. I talk what we're going through. I've got a rather robust agenda this evening. So keep your conversation outside to a minimum, we'd be greatly appreciated. I'm gonna jump around a little bit on the agenda. First item is driving interest. Bylaw livestock for the border health. This Chairman Board members, I'm in forty, Chair of the Valley and Border Health, and my agent, Delmon Lamonti. We're requesting a town meeting to remove three words in an article from stating six months or older. Because people have found that if you go over three, you have to get basically with dogs or other large animals, you have to get a kennel license from the zoning board. With the six months or older, some animals have multiple births. And they also have two females and a male, so they can have a short gestation period and end up going from five, seven, to nine animals. And because of this wording, they're saying, we can't go in there, prove what the age of animals, so. So we, we need to remove that, so we can end up having people. We can go in, look and say, three animals, fine. You know, versus five, seven, nine.
There's essentially, yeah, just to sum it up, I mean, he did a pretty good job, but there's, there's just too many loopholes currently with the way that the bylaws worded. So we're just trying to eliminate those words, to try and simplify things and make it easier to enforce.
Anything else you wanna add?
Nope, that's pretty much it. I mean, it's.
Any questions from the board? Okay. I'm just curious, why do you think of that as a? Well, I, I, I don't know. When we wrote our regulations, which people used to call chicken bylaw regulation, we decided to keep all the small animals in there, and we could set the numbers accordingly. But then we thought, hey, there's a livestock bylaw, for large animals, pigs, goats, whatever. And we said, well, can't be anything wrong with that. We didn't really look at it, we just said, we're sticking up regulation into the bylaw, because livestock was already happened many years ago in town. But we didn't see the word six months or older in there. Someone else pointed that out to us. So. And it has caused problems in very small neighborhoods with large animals. Can I ask my own question? Are we going, removing these words? Yeah. Will be similar to one other town today? Have we looked at that? We haven't. Okay. All right. There's a public chamber atomic. The way she her. So we would need to make a recommendation, I assume. Right, right. To move it forward to select board. Yeah. So the church this evening is to agree with it, board change, and then and entertain the motion. So I'll move to recommend change. Again, I'll second. We motion the floor, it has been set. We have no comments in the public. Any further discussion? I like to do a call to the row call, and also service attendance. As we begin to start the meeting. Rob?
Rob's here, but I hope that I can.
Okay. And so.
Brian, I.
Bill on?
Nick on?
So that motion passes and moves.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's the one that the.
I'll drop the water for Hillary, I think she needs it Monday.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Have a great day. We have a three oh six Maple Street.
Three oh six Maple Street has asked for continuation to February twenty second. They're going back and forth right now with the consultant on different comments to peer review.
All right. And I assume that's the same for the city ground?
Correct.
Any comments from the board? Is our peer review seen, seen appropriate? And they are going back and forth?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll move to continue. With February twenty second. So Maple Street. Oh, ask. City Road into three oh six Maple Street. Yep. Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
We motion the floor for a continuance on three oh six Maple Street. And also a scenic road permit for three oh six Maple Street. All in favor? Just by saying aye. And so, Brian, I. Bill on?
Bill on.
Nick on?
That motion passes and moves. Can you bring us up to date on Maple Street LLC parcel three?
Parcel three is also, they're seeking a continuation. They are meeting with the conservation next week, so they wanted to continue.
Any comments from the board? We, we have, did you think night last night? Seems like there's a couple.
We have big nights every night, pretty much. We do, we've got a lot on the agenda. Do you wanna put them out? You certainly can. You can put them out, if you'd like to march. Okay?
I guess, what does it look like? I know the four teams, limited to one topic.
So.
So would you put them out to the second of August?
We could put them to March twenty eighth.
What's the decision right now?
I think. Maybe it's the twenty ninth, March twenty ninth.
Okay.
It's March twenty ninth. So that would give us time for it that night to.
And they, they don't have a representative here at all.
No.
So the motion would be to, March twenty eighth. But, uh, another motion. That was a, my turn.
It would be twenty eighth, correct.
We're motioning the floor to extend Maple Street LLC parcel three. So, um, March twenty eighth. All in favor? No, it's.
That's been decided.
Brian, I. Bill on?
Bill on.
Nick on?
That motion passes and moves. Yes, sir.
What is, what is Maple Street parcel three for the folks here, the audience?
Parcel three is the Maple Gate Country Club, the bad portion of the golf course. We've also already reached a decision on parcel one, which is ex portions in Bethlehem. Parcel three, um, you should get, I apologize to the computer. There were three parts. Parcel one, parcel two, parcel three.
Thank you.
We are granting access potentially from parcel one to parcel two to parcel three in the town.
Greg, Greg is on as well, but yeah, if he was on, if we wanted to unmute him, but that's, he is here.
But that would, that would constitute a.
Just to say that he was seeking the continuation.
Yeah.
That's, we have that in writing.
So that's what it is.
Thank you.
All right, just to clarify, I know it's very confusing. I have some more seats up front.
The number three portion, number one.
Excuse me?
I just wasn't really with the number three portion of parcel, so thanks for the.
Yeah, it's very, we're doing it now, probably since September, it's confusing. They call it different numbers in town, which makes it more confusing. Maybe bring us up to date on where we are with Maple Black Street.
Okay, I'm ready. Would you like to just explain what we're doing this evening?
Sure, we can, we've requested a continuation.
Come up front? The floor's yours.
It'll be very quick. Amanda, with Gary or in Hammond, we're working with the peer reviewer and updating the plans, going through some of the comments with them. We just submitted the traffic response to comments today, and we've asked Amy for some assistance with the flow test that was conducted back in August. Just getting some resolution from the DPW and PR consultants if needed to address one of those comments. So right now, we've asked for a continuance to be on for February twenty second.
So do this the one?
February twenty second.
How is that meeting looking? You know, it's to be robust.
I think we could use that one.
Any comments from the board? What, what they're doing, they're asking for continuance to February twenty second. They've worked well with the town in this process to lower the scope and detail this budget for that. And they've worked with the neighbors. I don't wanna get into a meeting per se. But what they wanna do is come back and give us more detail on February twenty second, is that correct?
Yes, from the peer review, yes. Yep.
About what's going on. So I'm gonna entertain a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Can I say?
Brian, I. Bill on? Bill on.
Nick on?
That motion passes and moves. For those people that are here for Maple Black, I apologize that, you know, it was not a robust discussion that will take place on our next meeting. The next meeting is continuation of the public here for WS. Can you bring us up to where we are?
At the last meeting, the board had asked to have possible condition for finding draft. And that's what, um, have here.
Yep. You know, how are you?
I'm well, thanks. See you all. Hello.
Introduce yourself to the audience.
My name is Jeff Curley, with WS Development.
Austin Turner with Bowler.
Want to bring us up to speed, gentlemen? We were coming down the.
Yeah, I, I think our, in the meeting in January, we presented some of the visibility exhibits, that there was some concerns about visibility from all four sides. We presented some perspectives, you from four ninety five as well, some sections from through North Main Street to demonstrate the lack of visibility for, for the project. And I think we, as Amy suggested, I think there was conversation at the end of the meeting about advancing towards the beginnings of a, of a list of findings, or this of conditions. It's my understanding that that's what the planner has, has begun. So we're prepared to walk through that, discuss that, whatever the board's pleasure is to sort of continue advancing that.
That's nice. Well, you're.
Unless there are anything else that, that.
No, I think that's part of the best avenue. We're not above the public.
Okay. I wasn't prepared to go through this specifically. I didn't know if the.
Are there any concerns that you may have?
No, we, we did do some back and forth with the planner in preparation, so we have had an opportunity to add some comments here. So those are reflected in the language that's in front of you, so I don't know if there are specific topics or items that the board has to discuss, or.
Yes, instruct.
Fire away, Bill.
With page nine, number eight and eleven. The first night that that traffic consultant came in and basically, basically the discussion was, this project pretty much is dependent on the road. Hartford Avenue.
Sorry.
And when I heard that, I assumed that that would lead to construction as well. So I guess my concern number one is that, you know, to start a I, I, I agree that this project is dependent on improvements in Hartford Avenue, but I'm also concerned about the construction piece of it. And the fact that improvements, the way this would not, would not be in place when you're gonna start construction. Is that, is that the intent, is that the intent?
That's right. The, the operation would not begin until the offsite roadway improvements are completed. But construction could start such as the two, in theory, I don't know if this is how it'll ultimately come together, but could align, completion of the roadway and opening of the project could.
So I guess I wanted to hear a little bit more about that. Construction on Saturdays. Saturdays is your prime, you know, the prime business hours at that location. You see having construction on Saturdays?
Poten- again, it'd be potentially, yes, and we advantage that to make sure that the, that the shopping centers are, are functioning correctly, safely.
How would you manage that?
So I think the condition thirteen that you alluded to talks about their dependency of construction, ongoing police details, to the extent we end up, police judge them to be necessary for the safe operation of the entrance and and what's happening, we would, we would fund and, and maintain traffic.
Pay, pay for that, yeah.
That's right.
We've done that in town before. There's one site in particular on Mechanics Street that worked out, worked out fairly well, I think. Where there was a detail that was there, there were certain hours that the detail would be there.
Sure.
It was before a light got put in place. How these, have you had conversations with the police chief on, or the staff on this yet?
Not specifically the construction phase. No, I think we assumed that, or weren't surprised to see a condition like this, and as we got closer to construction and understood a little bit more detail from the contractor as to their specific schedule, and we're happy to coordinate. We have a history of working with the department and, and funding traffic duties in, in front of the operating shopping centers during the holiday season, things like that, so.
Yeah. So you get two main entrances with multiple lanes coming out on Hartford Avenue, the other exit. I, I guess I was curious and wanted to know a little bit more about what you saw as far as the needs of the traffic detail in that location, so during construction. I mean, it, it's gonna be off hours, Saturdays peak hours. I'd like to hear more about that.
Yeah, I, I wasn't prepared to speak to it specifically. I think the reality is we would understand that from the contractor's perspective and work closely with the police department to make sure that there are, there are details posted and, and traffic is maintained and access is safe for folks using the shopping center and, and our contractor bringing employees or equipment to the back. I, I don't have.
Yeah.
A detailed construction sequence.
Turning the one coming into the, you know, I, I just, I guess I need, I want to hear some more details on that. It's a concern of mine. And Saturdays is prime time, you know, do you see having possible construction on Saturdays?
I, I, it's possible. I wouldn't say it's gonna happen every week. But depending on what phase of the construction we're into, it's possible that they're working on a Saturday, or weather circumstances or things like that. I wouldn't say absolutely not to it. Do I think it'll be a standard part of their schedule? Likely not, but it could be part of it.
Is it essential to the, to the, to the construction project?
I, I, is it essential? It's, it's helpful to, to make sure we get it done quickly and, and on time, but.
Yeah, it goes, it goes back to the whole win, but I know there's a partnership.
Yeah, and nobody, well.
And that's listed in the details here, but, you know, there is a there's a, there's a project that traffics are major concern. It always has been, state one, day one, the second was basically until the product, Hartford Avenue gets, project gets done, then, you know, this project, we need, we need, we need basically Hartford Avenue finished before this.
Before the project can operate, that's, that's been the, so for the project to open, I don't.
So the word operating, I don't think is defined, and I could be interested to hear what the rest of the board feels, but
okay, to me, it's like, there's, there's an issue with traffic, okay, and there's traffic during operations, and then there's traffic
construction, there are two different types of traffic. I guess, we don't know what type of building, you know, we tried to use worst case scenario with a warehouse situation, but we don't know what's actually going in there today, right? I mean, you could do like.
Like, we could do something that's a much lower traffic generation.
Yes. We don't know what's, what's going to be there.
Right.
So we don't know what the needs are gonna be for the construction.
Well, I, I think there, the building is the, likely the building we're gonna build, the occupants within that building. So I don't think there's a great deal of variability in terms of what we're gonna build, and therefore the construction phase of the project, but the occupants of the project may be made up of entire, might be entirely a warehouse operation, but there could be some, as we discussed it, lux industrial type uses.
The occupancy will be the same size.
Yep.
Same type of.
Now, without coming back to you, yes.
Okay, I, I will take ownership of the clause for a detailed investigation. We thought of the idea five years ago, six years ago? Yeah, the, the, the other situation we have on Mechanics Street, that seemed to work really well, but it was a one, you know, a one turning lane. You didn't have multiple lanes coming into a bottleneck. I, I guess the police chief, yeah, I, I guess I'm not the expert here, but one of the concerns that I have is to, you know, of what would a detail even look like on that side? And I wouldn't wanna put you on the spot without analyzing the situation, but if you had comments, I.
I think it depends on, so during the construction phase, are, are we talking endless hauling of tri axles, trailer trucks, big things like that, that five or six of them go to leave, and now the people trying to leave Uno's Home Depot, wherever, are stuck because the light turns green and only left a few trucks through, so same thing coming in. Now you have all that traffic, whether they're coming off four ninety five, or wherever they're coming from, they're gonna lock up those turn lanes. Two or three trucks get through, people get stuck, people start running around like that, so. In theory, Hartford Avenue probably means one of our personnel manually controlling the traffic signal to keep things going there. But does that steamroll, and do we need to run the next signal down because we know those lights aren't a good sequence if we're running one? So it, it could be that. It could also be what happens over on the North Main Street side, because in the morning, that's ugly going northbound, in the afternoon, it's ugly going southbound, so it, it, it could be that, and it could be also a piece internally of the lot, that we need to do something in there, but that's a private lot, they could do a lot with cones and barricades and things, and kind of bubble the flow of regular, the regular Home Depot and then Pets Market, that's what I'm thinking. That construction. Then, once they're once they're occupied, yeah, I mean, obviously, depending what goes back there, Hartford Avenue, you know, between ten in the morning, two in the afternoon isn't a bad place, prior to ten AM and after, two in the afternoon, I, I try to avoid it. So do we want, you know, it depends what goes in there. You know, this distribution place for Walmart and Target go in there with, you know, three or five. Yeah, it would be better that that isn't occupied until the road is redone and the signals and everything handle that block of traffic, but they could have a low volume people in there that just have employees that come into the morning, work all day, go home, you know, so that would be less. But that, you know, I, I don't think any of us have a lot of control over what, what that looks like at the end. And Hartford Avenue, I mean, then, then we have, how long is that gonna take, and what's that gonna look like, so.
Yeah, those are my concerns.
There's a lot of variables that I think that something could be put within the decision, that this obviously is gonna have to have a meeting.
Construction.
A construction management meeting, and we could put something like that within the decision. Those answers clearly aren't gonna be defined tonight, because it's gonna have to be a meeting with the applicant and the police chief and chairman.
I think if there's, I'll address both houses of the chief's answer. I think if there are circumstances during construction where there's multiple trucks coming and it's creating a, a, either a concern onsite or offsite, he's gonna have a hotline to the construction manager out here. We will work to mitigate and minimize. No one's more interested in making sure that that shopping center functions properly, believe me. We'll be the ones that get the phone calls from those tenants operating out there, so if we can figure out a way to, to bolster this condition, to make sure that we're in regular contact with them, making adjustments to schedule, to deliveries, to things like that, to minimize to the extent practicable the impact on adjacent roadways and within the shopping center, I'd be perfectly comfortable with that.
Let me put from another angle. The timeline of the construction. What, what's, can you give me an, an average and then a maximum and minimum of construction of the building that you would see, like, is this a construction project of a six month project, or is it a, it's gonna take a year to put this building together?
Depending on time of year, it's probably, uh.
Probably wouldn't do it during the winter.
Eight to twelve months.
During eight months, eight to twelve.
Site, site, site and bill.
Okay. Is, so, would, so would you be opposed to extending? I think that we've given you, I think if I read that correctly, it's five years to, to, to the project. I mean, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'd be more amiable to extending that another year and saying, until both, until the project's done, we don't start construction, because to me, construction's a good piece of this, and it's, it's an issue.
I, this. So just so I can clarify what you're getting at, Phil, so right now construction isn't really being discussed much in this, as far as a restriction. Occupancy is. So you are saying.
I think, so the way that, so since day one, we were discussing that occupancy, it wouldn't work with occupancy. But it was really, it was really the start of the project, it was the project, it wasn't construction, it wasn't occupancy, it was the project. And I just think you might have had it different view than I had, and maybe the rest of the board has another view. But I guess what I'm there, there's a lot of complexities during construction, it doesn't happen during operations. Okay, the operation piece of it, there's, there's traffic studies that are part of this, at fifty percent, a hundred percent, there's all sorts of traffic studies, but not during construction. I'm concerned about construction on Saturdays, because that's the prime thing, we're using the same entrances in and out of that facility that your construction people would be doing soon, right? Is it the same construction entrances as you mean? So Saturday to me is a concern, but I think overall I, I'm concerned about the, the overall destruction before Hartford Avenue gets fixed. And when does Hartford Avenue get fixed? We don't know. That's the problem. We don't know when it gets fixed. If, if this, if you start, I doubt if you start construction next month, but this gives you five years of construction.
We're gonna.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't make a business decision to do that.
No, we would not, we wouldn't spend money to build a building we can't operate. And it's clear we can't operate it until the improvements are.
Yeah, we need the improvements in place, and I think we, I, I'd like to hear what the rest of the board thinks about improvements in place for construction. Go right ahead.
Good question. Are there improvements to the driveway that cannot be made without improvements being made to Hartford Avenue? And if so, what would the limits of construction be to the driveway?
There are, when you say the driveway, crossroads, I think.
We turned it off, the entrance off Hartford Avenue.
Throw it off the. It's possible that there's potential for some, but without signal heads in the right place, without turn lanes, without the widening of, of Hartford Avenue itself, you'd be building up a driveway that's designed to receive traffic turning from lanes that don't exist yet.
So that I understand, so to, to support Phil, that driveway was designed we'll call it a truck traffic. The truck traffic during construction would be similar to truck traffic you would see during daily operation in terms of deliveries and in terms of just whatever, similar sized vehicles coming into that driveway could be similar to what we'd see during construction, which was why we talked about the design of the driveway for a month.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
What I envisioned happening, that was the, the idea of the five year timeframe, because we don't know when Hartford Avenue is going to change or what it takes. We do know from the very beginning that this building will not be operated until Hartford Avenue is used. With that in mind, and the chief picked up on it, we're probably gonna replicate what we did on Mechanics Street with the detail will probably be there during construction. We will look at certain hours when we have peak, peak construction time. I also think that we're gonna have to do, we spend a lot of time surging the, the traffic once it comes into the parking lot to go back to the construction. So we're gonna have to do that, or the applicant will have to do that during the construction process. So everything we talked about internal on controlling traffic will have to be addressed during the construction process. So those vehicles, and they'll probably be construction vehicles, very few passenger vehicles.
Very few passenger vehicles. Will follow what we want to do. When the, the, uh, project is done. The only thing that's happened is to take it to, um. A little bit to the exit, but to Hartford Avenue. So as construction vehicles come in, they're going to have to do a. Construction managing program and transportation. And traffic control manager. To manage those vehicles. Going to the site to keep them separate from. The parking lot that we talked about since July. When this is going to be open. So that owns will fall for them. And I think the chief can go back and replicate what we did on mechanic and Naples Street with that warehouse that we did. So it, it may involve details and may involve officers. It's far reaching, we may have to put something in here that we, uh, condition it somewhat. We want them taking consideration Saturdays during, um, Christmas. And, and maybe we, we, we reduce traffic especially. But, um. The emphasis of this goal was to try to control the traffic. And not have this, so, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, have this recently opened. Until we have the changes on Hartford Avenue. And we don't, yeah, we don't know when that's going to happen. We, we're hoping it soon, they're, they're hoping whether we are, that it's soon. I believe they have David Dave's consultants. And trying to, you know, fast track that.
I don't know if that's part of the conversation this evening, let's say that, okay. Uh, I, I'm open to, um, and we can take a crack at it, you guys can take a crack at it, but expanding. This condition to add in, you know, real time recommendations, mitigation requirements such as limiting hours. You know, staggering deliveries, things like that, I think we can. These guys and, and the contractor can, can figure this out and make sure that, that the corridor functions properly during construction at the shopping center. And we can expand on this to.
Oh, I like that.
Add some of those, some of those kinds of things, yeah. Give him a, a little bit of a playbook to, to work, but that's our under, that's my understanding of it as well.
I like that idea and bring up December, so. Love to see what your result, what you're going to think about December, because as an experienced retailer, if you are, sir, I'd love to hear your solution.
I'm, I'm experienced, I'm not an experienced retailer, I'm experienced and you see phone calls from retailers.
Okay.
What's your thing want to do?
No, yeah, we, I mean, they may have the rep, they don't want to stop people from going in and buying.
No, we have to figure out how to make that work.
Yeah, then we're also getting Hartford Avenue approved, so. But, you know, there's, there's a timeline that we don't talk. So I would be very interested in the discussion, hearing the discussions.
Yeah, we can, uh, we could talk about who takes a crack at something like that, but we can expand on that condition language and we'll, we'll propose something more for the board.
We also, again.
That's, sorry, but that's primarily eleven.
Yeah.
Not eight, we're talking about editing, right? Sorry.
Um, what I did, like, I, I remember on page nine.
We already say no construction activity is taking place.
Well, the hours are, you know. Eight through eleven, I guess, you could take a look at that and discuss it, but it's the construction, it's the construction phase that we were just discussing and how that plays into it. Certain eight through eleven, that's what my concern is.
Okay. Thank you, sure.
Do you anticipate any blast?
Oh, we don't.
Okay, good.
Yeah, all, all indications are that we won't be engaging any, uh, any significant ledger rock out there.
I forget what members. When you have a long-term tenant, you really are. Uh, we, uh, really encourage, uh, the switch backup sound.
Yeah, there, there are, I think, um, in the back and forth between us, there were two conditions that got deleted here that I think. We can speak to, one of them is, is that, it's the switch backup, it was, it was, uh, in the original draft we saw. Hadn't been a topic of conversation for the last fifteen, sixteen months, so I, I didn't know if it was, okay.
We're familiar with, that's all.
If it's just standard, again, given its remote location, its proximity to the highway, I can understand where this is. Maybe a, an appropriate condition for something that's closer to a residential neighborhood or a downtown, if you will. I didn't know if it was necessary to impose that condition on this project here. Um, the other one was the contribution towards, uh, uh, litter.
Clean streets.
In, in the street, um. Again, we, we privately maintain a lot of the frontage in the corridor here. We think our vehicles are, an overwhelming amount of them are going to be on and off of four ninety-five pretty quickly. But if that is a, again, we didn't know if that was a standard condition that came along.
It becomes pretty much standard for warehouses.
I understood if we were on a scenic road or, you know, someplace that, that was doing more traveling, likely to do more traveling on. Local town roads, we don't expect that to be the case here.
What we've heard from our neighbors is, um. Trucks don't always, uh, follow the easy path. In a second. On second line. Uh, that's evident on, uh, Maple Street. And, um. I, I forget the terminology, I'm looking for, uh. The handle here. Where are those bottles, what do you, what do you call those bottles? The polyurethane. Okay, what, what, what I?
I, I, I think we got it.
So, so, you know, what they're, what they're waiting to get on, I know you're psyched to handle. The, uh, volume of trucks on Saturday. But while we're driving through town, here's my impression. So what we've done is we've done a standard calculus. Once something is done, that we can use to clean up the street.
No, and, and I, again, I, and if, if that's what the board desires, I think we can, we can make that work.
Good.
In this particular case, I just wanted to point out the fact that. The, the corridor that we're talking about, the, the overwhelming amount of trucks are going to get on and off four ninety-five immediately in front of.
Yep.
The shopping centers and those shopping centers. Um, we actually privately maintain the litter pickup along the corridor through there today. Um, so I, I, again, I understand the need for there, or perhaps the need for the condition. If there are trucks making their way through other parts of town, I just don't think this project is going to be one.
It's not a viable, but it's something we're, we're implementing for the warehouse. Just because we, you know, we've got to do that.
I see.
Okay. Any other?
I, I did not, no, we, um, we can work with Amy to get those two back in. I think that was the intention that this draft include those two back in here, but I just wanted to call that out for sure.
So, I recall one of the projects that we worked on previously in January, you know, to answer this. Jim mentioned, this is going to have a few years, that. There was some type of construction plan that's submitted or discussed with the town prior to construction. I'm not too sure what the requirements are for that, or if there is any specific requirements for that, but. Um. What exactly does the town usually look for?
Yeah, so we, um, we invite the contractor in with his whole team. And we have meetings with our, our teams, you know, board of health, planning, uh, you know, representative of each department. And we ask the developer to explain when they're going to get going, what their schedule is going to look like. Who's going to be in there first, you know, basically an overview of times that they're going to start, you know, and any kind of special, uh, construction that's going to take place. You know, whether it's going to be classing or anything, you know, that's going to be out in the forefront of the structure. Um, so, you know, it's, it's a general meeting and it basically gives all of our departments a chance to put input in. And to maybe alter their plan a little bit based on, you know, the town and the disruption. You know, maybe, um, you know, first thing in the morning for certain things where there's heavy traffic, you know, so it gives us an opportunity to, um. Have them explain what their plan is and then we take it from there and interject any kind of issues that, you know, e- even a, um. A resident may have, you know, a special condition already. You know, and that gives us that opportunity at that time, so we, we let them bet out the project and then we give them our input.
And then we did have them put it in writing.
It's, it's a narrative, they, they supply a narrative.
Yes. And. Which can be changed, because obviously things change, so if that were to change, they would come back and discuss it, but it is, it is put.
It's pretty funny.
Yeah, I was going to say, it might, Phil, one thing that might be helpful is if that's a condition in here where there's something specific that. I mean, there's many specific items that should be looked at, but that has to be specifically stated. And the town will look at, perhaps, I don't know.
No, I, I think it's, it's a natural thing to be included in there, I, I.
Yeah, so, um.
Probably no one's had more, more of those meetings with you than, than folks building out spaces at our shopping centers and former strangers to those, we would expect that.
So this type of construction, though, it goes right to your question and it's a good question. So this is a, I'm assuming this is a total panel construction.
Likely, yep.
Is this going to be all then from like?
We don't know if we'll cast, we'll cast, we don't know yet, we think we're going to cast something.
At different times, there's an influx of deliveries, uh, that's a, that's a good, uh, that's one good one right there, they're going to cast in place. So that eliminates tractor trailers lined up along the road that are hauling in from, they come from Pennsylvania, they're precast panels, they're forty foot tall. And they, they get unloaded off trucks, so it, it could be a queuing problem, so that's one thing that's eliminated. But items like that, you know, when they do the roof, all of the roof foam comes in and there's tractor trailers coming in. So that, at different times, to your point, there's going to be backup, but if we can anticipate that and, you know, and put that condition that you're looking for. I think that's very wise, you know, we're on to, and, you know, maybe work with the contractor and.
And the police.
That's right.
And, and expect, sure, yeah.
Doors of concrete and how many hours in the road and what time the trucks are going to be coming in for that. Yeah, so it doesn't all that stuff that's familiar with you. You know, here, what I would like to say, so, um, what's probably important too is, um, a queue area for, you know, as far as when you start your site work. So trucks can come in and not, not idle on the roadway, you know, on the side of Home Depot.
On one twenty seven.
That they can, you can accommodate them on site, like all these concrete trucks.
Sure.
You know, and deliveries, if, if you have a, the area excavated and, and the area for the queue to be, you know, for these things to queue up. It's just going to eliminate a lot of hassle.
Nope.
For the shopping center and the intersection.
Yep.
So I think it could be managed in that way, you know, with some planning. And we normally do that at meetings, but, you know, um, it, sometimes it takes a little trial and error, with, you know, the police chief is going to have to analyze, you know, what. Details are going to be required, but, you know, we can, we do all work together on that.
I think a condition that obligates us to coordinate closely with town staff on things like that makes all sense.
I guess when we were talking about a condition like that, but we'd also like, I'd like also like to hear next meeting, the discussions that you guys have had.
I, I'm not going to be able to define some of the things, those are things that are going to happen when we hire a contractor, when we figure out.
Well, for example, how many, you know, your discussions with the police chief, there should be a discussion with his ideas incorporated into what the plan is. And I guess, I, I'm not comfortable with the construction timeline right now.
An idea of what will be contained within the plan?
So, so, for example, it was mentioned perhaps a detail that would be turning the lights, you know, changing the lights. Is that going to be, you know, that's one possibility. And, but what about, you, you've got multiple lanes coming with one, it's the ideas Tim suggested, I guess we'd like to, I'd like to hear more about that. And I'm only one board member, but I would like to hear more about construction Saturdays, December, all those things I think need to be thought out and talked about.
I, I think. What we're saying is I'm, I'm, I'm not able to, to provide that detail as part of a planning process. But I am able to accept and perfectly willing and expect to have a condition in here that obligates me to work with. Town staff and make sure all of that stuff is executed.
Question that asked, I thought we, we were to come back, talk to the police chief, talk to them about it, come over the plan and come back here before that question is asked. That was my understanding of the conversation.
No, I was going to add additional language to the condition that, that provided the police chief. Specific examples of things he could do such as limiting work hours, staggering deliveries, things like that, suggestions.
More of a plan towards the construction, Saturdays, December.
Components of that plan to be determined.
Components is a good plan, is a.
But I, I can't commit to those. Things today as part of the, I, I, like, and for the entirety of the construction schedule. The, the. When that stuff arrived, we will have worked with the police chief.
There needs to be some variability in this, I understand that.
Yeah.
But right now, there's a, there's, since day one, we talked about the fact, and I've said this twice tonight already. We talked about the fact that the first time your traffic engineers came in, he said, I'm agreeing.
That this traffic.
Doesn't work without.
The operation of the warehouse would not work without the traffic improvements, but not the construction. We've, we've been careful to use the word occupy and operate.
This project, I'll use the word project and I'm not going to miss words here, but I'm concerned about the construction.
I think we can develop the policy for this restructuring in the next couple of weeks. I worry the factor between all the parties involved.
I, I think perhaps, another way of saying it, I think you'll want you to go through and do some contingency planning. If we do X, then, okay, this is going to be, we, we can't hold you to it obviously, but, okay, this is how it's going to impact, this is the. How it's going to play out, take contingent land, consider this a million times. Contingency planning to give us some level of comfort that we've covered our bases in the decision. So if you can do that, go back, I'm sure you've scoped out the cost and how to construct these things and have an idea of how this is all going to play out. Over time, you know, what are we looking at, what's the impact? Can't hold you to it, but we want to understand that, that it's already been thought about and there's, there's a, something in place to give us a sense.
Understood. We're trying to flesh something out, but at the end of the day, I think it's ultimately going to be about the communication with town staff and police and. The board, but we'll, we'll flesh something out, we will take that.
Um, do these construction meetings you do weekly? Uh, we do them by the project.
By the project.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, you know, um, I think you can definitely come to put some language in there that gives the police chief the ability. To, um, have the authority to, um. Require details with the contractor, to your point, I think, I think we could probably adjust the wording in there to, um, you know. He's responsible for the detailing, for the movement of traffic, but at the discretion of the police chief, if, if there's a problem, he's going to address it. He needs the ability to address it as long as it's in their site approval.
I thought that was already built in, I'm not sure, I know when, I did work on rule one, I. If you didn't have the proper people on board.
Right. I, I think that's my understanding of it, we'll, we'll flesh some things out and we'll add some language to this.
This is a little different too, because we're not talking work on Hartford Avenue or on North Main Street. Cause then I don't need anyone's, I have the ability to say, no, you can't block the lane, that's it. This is, we're talking private property with an impact to the public roads. So that's where the language gets a little, a little foggy.
You have to firm that up, so, okay. And I, and I would like the police department to have. Make sure they're comfortable with the language. That's why the condition should be in there.
Yes, absolutely. No, absolutely. We'll do both, we'll get a condition in here that articulates that as well and we'll, we'll, we'll try to put something together that advances the discussion a little more.
Okay, sorry.
So it sounds, it sounds like the issue right now is this as far as firming up construction and it's really. It varies based on Hartford Avenue is really what it comes down to. You, I assume, are probably not going to start construction on the warehouse until you have approval for the work. For DOT essentially.
Well, the, the town is actually, this is the town undertaking the roadway project, we're contributing money to it. So it's the town that is pursuing the approvals from the DOT. For the, uh, and they, they've got local approvals ahead of them now as well, they're coming to conservation commission, I understand that. They just submitted seventy-five percent design plans back to the DOT within the last month or so. And it's my understanding that they're, um, poised to make a filing with Concom to manage some of the stormwater runoff and, and detention and such. That is for compliance, I can.
All right, I was going to propose something, but I don't think it's going to work.
I like where you're going, is there a point, I know, but I like where you're going.
Yeah.
Is there a point in the process? That. With the approvals, I know the town's getting the approvals, that, that makes, this, that's the decision point for you to start construction.
Um, town has approvals, uh.
Yeah.
Um, town has approvals, uh, the project is fully funded.
Fun.
And they, and they, and they've committed to undertaking the project. That's when we, in theory, we had a tenant in tow and we were ready to build this building. Those would be the kinds of things we'd wanna make sure were in place before we began construction.
So you you want a yes from the state, is that what you're asking?
A yes from the state, and I I think there's there's still some funding to pursue on the part of the town. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I was gonna recommend, if you would be amenable to the condition of, once the Hartford Ave project is approved, not funded, but approved from DOT standpoint, that that is when construction may commence.
Um.
Why not funded?
Yeah, I.
I mean.
You can put that condition and I frankly, I'm not sure I I would go build, cause again, I can't operate it until the improvements are in place.
I agree. I know that there's just concern, I see, Phil, I see your point as far as construction, it could start whenever, but I, from your business standpoint, I can build this.
I can't operate it.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm just trying to find some new ground here as all.
No, I I I think the managing of the, I I again, maybe I presume too much, but I I think we're gonna coordinate fully with town staff and the police department. We'll articulate some of that and expanded version of this condition will will come up with some scenarios, to use your word, Brian, and 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 articulate some of that as best we can. As long as there's some flexibility there again to work with the experts and make sure that in real time, things are functioning out there. Circumstances we can't imagine today or things we might overimagine today that don't turn out to be necessary. That's what I wanna try to avoid, but I I trust these guys to make sure that our contractors. If if we have an impact that manifests itself on, yeah, sure, then come back.
Yes.
No, and we would prior to starting a construction project, prior to issuing a building permit, all of that stuff, but we'll do it now.
And these meetings are a pleasure. I mean, we need to, we have construction meetings, but we need them during the process.
But I think we need some framework.
That's all.
You can't anticipate everything, but, you know, that's why we will address any issues.
You have one more question?
Yeah, I'm getting yelled at by my boy. For it for condition number twenty-four, the last sentence states, the developer or its contractor shall provide written confirmation with town planner of coverage under the NIPD's general permit in connection with de-watering activities associated with the project. I would just strike the last half of that, cause first of all, it's a NIPD's construction general permit is.
So everything after permit you'd strike?
Yeah, I would, cause it's more than just de-watering.
I don't disagree.
And I would also include in that, um, I know we've had it in other projects just, and it's gonna be required anyway, I assume. CONCON is going to put it in their, um, order of conditions, if they issue order of conditions, but a copy of the SWIFT will also be on site. So I would probably add that.
That's a, that's, that's necessary under the NIPD's general permit as well, but I I think you're right. I don't think there's any need to limit the scope of that. I think if we can demonstrate.
Yeah.
That we've registered under the general permit and and to do that, we have to have a.
Sure.
Yep, understood.
That is all.
Um, so I, my understanding of this graph, at least as a earlier this afternoon, has been by sort of deserved by comments until that happens. With regard to C two, that would be page seven. I think the understanding is, at least for the town, is town's gonna pursue the grant because the town has to be the person, the entity that pursues the grant. Push comes to shove, any shortfall in funding is on you.
That's not the the understanding we reached with the town originally.
Okay.
We we, way back when this all started, I I guess Dennis wasn't, uh, wasn't gonna come tonight, but we had a memorandum of understanding with the town manager and planner at the time when, uh, Mr. G Martino at the DBW that that we would fund the initial design necessary for them to go pursue um, funding for the roadway improvements. The roadway improvements are not necessary by virtue of the construction of this project. The roadway improvements are necessary under the baseline condition out here. The corridor is badly broken. The reality was that no single project could afford to build the the improvements necessary. So after a lot of conversations with the town about that, we we struck an agreement that we would front and did front close to a half a million dollars in design costs and and cost for a consultant that helped the town prepare a MassWorks grant and go pursue. Their their application was to pursue the entirety of the funding. MassWorks came back with only a portion of it. Um, we are committed to fund up to three million dollars. There's a two million dollar MassWorks grant. There's a two million dollar DOT match, I believe, to the MassWorks grant. So there's still a slight funding gap that exists today. And the agreement, the memorandum indicated that WS would continue to assist the town in their pursuit of additional funding sources, but we were not, beyond the three million dollar commitment we made, we were not to be the the source of the remainder of that funding. That was the.
Once again.
Um, today, I don't know the answer, to be honest with you, Brian. I think at at one point, maybe a year ago, it was about four million dollars. Yeah. I wouldn't run out of the room with that number, but because it's older, but and the design has advanced. I don't know whether DBW would know whether, uh, the town's consultant has done more cost estimating. I know from our own experience, asphalt's come down a little bit in the last year, things like that. So you may see, uh, but I'm sure other things have gone up. I don't know the size of it, yeah, today.
Oh, that that I was completely sort of misunderstood even the conversation I had earlier today with regard to need for more funding from WS in terms of funding the project. Uh, and that commitment, this is a three million dollar commitment, I would like to see in the agreement. Uh, in addition.
I I think it's in the, I think the agreement makes reference to the MOU and the MOU is where the this three million dollar commitment exists, but happy to take the town council's direction on that.
My understanding is a shortfall of concerns. And that I think that there was some expectation that that shortfall was covered by the other thing. In addition, it's within part. A lot of some completely misunderstanding that occurred over the past.
Yeah, that is not the structure of the agreement we we met, we reached with the town back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one when this started. That would be a.
I understand that.
Shift in what we agreed to.
Interpretation. But, um.
My interpretation, is that what you?
No, interpretation is the town's responsibility to make that. But again, I could be completely wrong.
Yeah, I would.
It's always been the expectation. This is a huge project we've done to take in town is hence is applying, is granted, it's happy. But the expectation is that.
If this project were not happening at all, this this roadway improvement project on one twenty-six is necessary.
But this project only lives and dies by this.
Yeah, everything in the corridor lives and dies.
It's a partnership, right? And it's.
Which is why we we advanced the funding initially, put the money at risk initially, committed but a chunk of the funding. But it was always the understanding, if you if you get ahold of the MOU from the town manager, that the that the town would fund the balance of the of the project.
Again, I could be, I couldn't have understood the conversation. I think there's a shortfall. And that needs to be addressed. Make this something.
I, there is a shortfall. It needs to be addressed in order for the project to go forward. I think all we're all our differences is whether we're the source of that funding, that shortfall. That was not our, that was not the structure of the agreement we arranged with the town manager.
That's not, that's not the purpose of the story.
No, it is. I mean, at at this point, this language has to be clear, um, in terms of yes, it's it's an arrangement that makes the town, but there's also a a funding component that does need to be considered and.
I do not know about. It's best I can ask you that.
But we also we also, day one, first person thought this project doesn't work.
Of course.
Without Hartford Ave. Of course, that was day one. So.
No one suggests anyone.
So, but the point, I'm not sure, we we gotta figure out how how it works and. And construction.
We'll figure that out.
I don't want to open, the construction piece becomes more. Part of the decision form space.
We've all still open. Yep.
But I don't think there's a method that that, um, you don't want to get perception of a holding of cost. Okay, but that's only my say.
It's that, that's not the intent there's.
I I understand.
There's, there's the revisions that were made to this are very one sided.
Hmm.
And this is a very, this, uh, very big.
Hmm.
And in reference, there's a memorandum of understanding where that also is subject to some revisions. I would, I would like this to be, to be clear with very, the party's respective contributions to the cost of the project.
That's right.
Yeah, so that's that's all I'm saying. And and my conversations I've had in the past, and my understanding, I could be wrong, is that there's, the the eight hundred pound grill, grill is that type of this, it's not gonna be three million bucks, it's gonna be much more. Make it happen, make your project happen. It's just the facts, right? I just wanted to be, I wanted to be crystal clear in our decision, what exactly is being contributed. Without a reference to another agreement that perhaps is less specific.
The the memorandum of understanding is very specific and very clear, but we can borrow the language that's in it and and bring it in here if that's the town council's pleasure or town manager's pleasure. We we can, I I would say, um, without WS's involvement early on here, stepping up to fund the twenty-five percent design, this project being the thing that represented the economic development that afforded the town the ability to pursue the MassWorks grant, you wouldn't have the four million dollars that you already have, plus the three million dollars, so you're seven million dollars closer to improving this project because of the memorandum of understanding and the and the money that WS fronted on behalf of the town to pursue this. So.
It's a partnership. There's there's.
It is.
Both sides. There's the, uh, scale and scope of this project is massive. It's gonna be the biggest building in town. And it's gonna have significant impact. And I appreciate your efforts to mitigate those impacts, but thank you for what you've done and contributed into this, but it's a partnership and.
Uh, we absolutely believe it to be a partnership. We, that's the partnership we agreed to back in the memorandum of understanding. I would, again, just so it doesn't stay out floating, this project is not the source of the problem in one twenty-six.
You're other two shots there.
No, those both, all all three of those projects were built and had roadway mitigation that was required of them. We built all the signals that are in the one twenty-six corridor already today. This is background growth that's grown up over the last, that's, I'm not, we've had our own traffic engineer come and testify in front of two other traffic consultants. And the and the DOT agrees as well, so.
Background growth. Free shopping areas.
Those shopping centers are not generating more traffic than they did the day they opened.
I like to open up the bubble. You want any questions on this?
I'm just getting curious. I'm not familiar with the project. This is gonna be a warehouse.
That's right, sure is.
Right along the highway. Okay, what size? I heard the largest in town.
It's a six hundred thousand square foot footprint.
What's the largest?
It will be the largest.
What is the largest now?
Um.
Yeah, in a, in a place that like, uh, bigger than Amazon. The TriMark is smaller, bigger than us.
Yeah. Yes, sir. It's been something we've been working on now for.
Fifteen, sixteen months. Well, in front of the board for that long, as I said.
Yes, sir, gentlemen in the back. We're gonna have a six hundred thousand square foot warehouse. What are we putting in it? We, they don't know, it's a building.
It'll be an Amazon package that's coming faster.
What? So we're not know.
End up with a six hundred thousand square foot empty building?
No, sir, it could be manufacturer aware.
Manufacturing of what?
They they will go out and market the building. Do we get approved?
It would be used consistent with what's allowed under zone.
It has to be based on the, uh, zoning bylaws and what's allowed.
Okay.
I can assure you this. Um, in case the question comes up. Marijuana growth is not allowed in that zone, is that correct? I believe we restricted that to the next slide. So, you know.
I actually don't know the answer to that question.
That's not your point. Uh, gentleman in the back. Can you say your name, please?
My name is Alfred Graham. I live in Hartford Village on Hartford Ave. Right now, traffic is backed up between seven o'clock and nine thirty, coming from Mendon, Oakdale, Hudson Bridge and other towns. And this traffic, as those towns expand, gets longer. I practically get out of my driveway and I turn right toward one forty, and I've seen traffic backed up all the way to Grove Street, uh, depot street, where there's trucks coming out. I tried to get into Midway, which is five miles to my house. It takes me twenty minutes. And that's without any progress. It splits traffic lights between Main Street and Maple Street. Um, to add more, um, even if it, Hartford Ave was expanded, we still only got one road going down toward Midway, one coming in from the south, which is traffic could be backed up to almost High Street in the morning. And it it's a mess right now. Um, I've been in construction fifty years and um, nothing ever seems to go on schedule. Very, very few jobs are were complete within the estimated time. With Hartford Ave not being a viable road for more construction and stoplights and and police officers directing traffic, uh, it seems when they go, I don't mean this in any bad way. They see a quarter of a mile each way. They don't see what's backed up behind them. And it did, it it just disrupts everybody's way of life. People that come to visit me, they, uh, they hesitate because of the traffic trying to get out of the driveway. Make them that way to me and, uh, my impulse.
Thank you for your, but sir, I don't, I don't have an answer. What I can tell you is.
I have one more question, sir.
I'm sorry?
I do have one more question.
Yes, sir.
How does this benefit the town? And please don't tell me that adds to the tax base.
Also, it 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 does add to the tax base. Um, we've been through this now for almost, um, eighteen months. We've heard complaints about what's going on in town. This was properly zoned. They have the right to build it where they are. The problem, a lot of people have concerns about are, um, zoning bylaws. I don't know if you watch our meetings that often. Uh, we we try to change the zoning bylaws. And we've been told things people do not want to change. Um, I realized, um, towns or west and east of a building. Um, I realized um, towns or west and east of a building and we have a lot of cross through traffic. I was meeting with some people last week and I would. Bet you a lot of the traffic coming through Bellingham. It it's not fair, but I don't. I don't think a high percentage of Bellingham residents. Were 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 cut through tax.
Well, from my observation, I've been in town for fifteen years, there's always been waters or island towers coming down. Get on four ninety five. I'm not saying. That should be stopped in any way, shape or manner, but to add to it. Whether it's inconvenience or people are not selling it.
We've heard um. How long have you owned this property?
The people behind Home Depot, we've had under agreement since the late nineties.
So, you know, this has been floating around for a long time.
I know that.
Um, we looked at um, the shops that fell. Um. And people can misinterpret what we say. Uh, for a warehouse to be in Belling. Uh, this is probably the most ideal thing. It's adjacent to four ninety five. Um, getting on and getting off four ninety five, I would assume, sir, huge majority of that. Will become on and off four ninety five.
I would agree with that.
Not going to, not going to develop.
That would be my expectation, yeah.
So we have efforted in eighteen months to try to control it. Um, they've partnered with the town to try to get us to improve the corridor on Hartford Ave. This project will not be operational. Until that is done. I also understand there are grant works in place. To down the road. Widen Pocket Avenue. From um, I believe. Let's say around Market Basket to the Medway line. So the town is looking at that as best as it can. Unfortunately, with this town's design, we didn't have the luxury of developing. Wide corridors to travel.
It's just that if you widen it down to the Medway line, it's only got one road.
I I understand that.
The Medway, so it's going to convert.
I I understand. But we, you know, we're we're trying to look long term as best we can. I know it's not possible. But, you know, they have the right to build where they are. And if you want to change it, probably don't you don't give it, present to the zoning board if you want to read zone properly and value it.
If it was a. Three or four story office building, it'd have a new flush of cars and be there every hour. Most of the no difference than they have now.
We can cut that off and that's fixed. Could I, can I take a step? So. This applicant is coming to the town and working with the town and the state and the town working with the state based upon. Mass works grants, okay, and the idea behind that is that. The applicant has got a project, okay, that's going to make us feel free to interject, but basically. The applicant's coming with a project that makes us eligible to get money from the state. And some of that money, two million dollars of that money, which is the majority, the the money's going to go towards one twenty six improvements. So from a simple, my simple way of putting it is. This project's coming forward, making us eligible to get grants from the state, which then allows us to improve Hartford Ave. And that's kind of the gist of of. Why we're trying to do this is that we're trying to say, okay, we can get some money from the state. I town meeting voted as a resident of this town, I sat in town meeting in the high school. And voted at least once to allocate money to this, to that studies up there. So it's something that's been going on for a couple of years. The idea is we're going to get some money from the state, there's a gap of funding we just talked about, it's not all there, there's a project that is in front of mass DOT. Right now. That's not in front of this board in entirety to try to improve Hartford Ave, and that's why we're talking about this. And maybe that's a simple way of putting it for me. Would love to get more, if we had more. Any other, any other questions?
Thank you.
And Emily, whether steel road. One thing I never hear this board talk about, and I've been telling here, I've lived here for fifty two years. And I I've seen planning board, planning board, the faces changed, none of it ever talked about quality of life of the residents. Now you're going to refute that, I know you're laughing, you're talking about mitigation and working with this. It's like the things are already approved, but. But you have one thing about the town of Hollis. They were, they had a proposal bigger than this, okay, and it wasn't the first Hartford project, this is the second one. And the female chairman of the board said no, because it doesn't fit. The 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 character of the town, it doesn't, it's going to hurt our traffic, it's going to kill us with pollution and it's going to drain our waters apart. Our quality of life in this town just keeps getting worse and worse and worse.
And you know, you know how that that Hollison case ends?
I know what you said to me last time.
No, no.
I know what you said to me last time.
That project that the 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 Hollison planning board said no.
And they're not afraid to say no.
Yep.
They're not afraid to say no, this board is afraid to say no.
Excuse me.
Okay, so.
That's not the case, sir.
So the town of Hollison denied that project, the applicant appealed to the court, lost, came back, lost all of the dedication for the town. And got a bigger and better proposal and they built that or they're going to build that in Hollis. That is not a viable option in the real world of development. That is not possible and what you're articulating is unfair to hold us in a standard that doesn't exist in reality.
Drive down Hartford Ave going to Mendon and Milton at five o'clock in the evening. Try that and you'll see how your quality.
You're not. Yeah, we're not. You you don't have unlimited power.
There's no, you have the ability to tell these two men no, and I don't think it's going to happen. Okay, that female in Hollis, it's my hero, or I should say, arrow.
Any more comments, anyone from Zoom? What I'd like to do, I think we have some language. Would you like to um. Come back with changes before the first. I I'm that's one of these.
Yeah, I think we're going to get. When, when, what would um. Um. What? Yeah, we could want to think about what, how long would it take them to put some box together? We can, we can draft, I I'd love to figure out what's happening with town council, I understand.
Yeah, we have to give a final draft to town council.
So we'd like to just make sure that our, we're not doing this in terms of their review.
Are are you okay now having a draft decision and a denial of the draft?
No, because I think.
Or do you not want to have any of that done?
No, I I think we uh, do the determinations, the findings. And then finalize that. And then um. I know it's stretching enough, but I think we're getting fairly close.
Yeah, I would like to hear. Like to hear, I wouldn't want to close tonight, but I'd like to hear some of the discussion that we had and, you know, what we what's envisioning. Some of the languages that proposed and also, you know, input a brief conversation with police department and Tim and. Get some framework put in place so to work through. So I think we need a presentation on that.
I I know we allocated the four to just to one topic, so it may happen.
You're saying not continue us to the twenty second? Are are you saying don't come back on the twenty second? We'd like to come back on the twenty second.
I I just want to hold on.
Yeah.
We've boxed in the street, also moved the street, so they'll have the review back to do that. And then three oh six Maple Street.
One more, that's the twenty second.
I don't think those ever repeat that long, the three oh six is worth a view of the period comments. So, um, but.
It'll be a long night, but um.
Well, we have, it's three oh six Maple, they're they're coming back with the period comments. And they've, most of those have been, are being addressed outside of the meeting, they're going back and forth, so it should be hopefully finalized to what a few might still be to address. Uh, that would be for three oh six.
We can continue the lot, right?
Lot three is for the twentieth of March.
Twenty second.
And they have to go to conservation, parcel three still wants to go to conservation, so that's why that was pushed out, whatever, whatever you guys would like to do.
I would even try to do the twenty second. And then um, decision on um.
Is it? The expectation that town council will have weighed in on?
That we're going to.
This language prior to the twenty second, yeah, great.
Yep.
If we can.
Hold it.
Just align with that, yeah, okay.
All right. We have to bear with this in the schedule.
Understood.
My worry is with town council, coming back on the twenty second to do the coverage again, the direction again, so do you want to wait to send it to town council? You want her to look at what we have now?
Yes.
And and we'll get the four conditions that.
Over.
And we'll get those over to you as quickly as possible, I just want to. Yeah, I I just want to make sure that we get back her or his comments ahead of time, so.
They have the more detail.
And in parallel fact, we'll meet with uh. Lisa, building inspector, and get a draft of. A construction phase traffic management.
Yeah.
Something like that.
And the construction management will probably be pretty robust. That's in general.
Okay.
Do we need a motion? Okay, the motion continues to convert twenty second. By the side. All in favor? Go on.
Go on.
Yeah, go on.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure. Uh, Amanda Capillary with Gary Aaron Hellman, uh, here on behalf of William Way Partners, LLC. Uh, looking for an A and R plan approval for five lots off of Mendon Street and William Way. So it's, the applicant has purchased all five lots and they're looking to combine it into one.
Can you give some more detail on what you plan to do there?
Uh, right now, it's just to create a larger lot, the applicant is still looking at um, development plan for.
Any questions?
Jim has reviewed this and in his notes, he said, I'm just comfortable with the motion to reverse.
Nope. Yeah.
But that's not, that, it doesn't matter, it's.
Yes. Yeah, right now, it's just, it's not a subdivision.
No.
Okay. Your purpose is to make it a subdivision?
No, it's not, that's the purpose of the plan is the approval not required, it's it's not a subdivision, a plan.
Okay, now.
I will.
I have nothing.
Make a motion to sign the A and R. Twenty second.
Second, Nick.
Um, anybody, Brian, Paul, Chris, inside. Go on.
Go on. Nick, go on.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
I'm on hold. Excellent, good.
Not too pretty bad.
They they can certainly provide that overview, but I I just wanted to bring the board up to date, they did meet with Tim and I, what was it, Tim, about six months ago? Um, some interesting site, I wonder if you could just make some upgrades.
How's your.
Excellent. No housing from land plan. Can we move this over to everyone to see?
Sure.
Can you make a motion to first?
Oh, yes, you know, sorry.
That's okay.
I wanted to put it that way so the crowd can see too.
So much.
All right.
Go on. Yeah, go on.
Sorry about that, sir.
As Amy said, we had a meeting a number of months ago regarding this property. Um, there's basically two things going on that we're here to address tonight. First is um, Jay would like to expand his work area in the back of the, you had the pocket lot and change the drainage system. Right now, there's a open drainage basin. And we want to change that to private open drainage basin and under about infiltration, so we'll have more area to work with his business. Jay does teaching for cranes. So the proposal is to have that as a gravel area. Submit a drainage calculations to support all of that. Other issue that I'll hear since the site plan is approved probably fifteen, twenty years ago, uh, ownership has changed. And the use has changed ago. So the large building in the back is continuing to be a repair shop. And we have an office building and any uh. And we have an office building and any, uh. Classroom area. Occasionally, Jay does teaching at the site, but oftentimes, he does off-site at a, at a customer's, um, place of business. So what we've done is we sized up the parking, for the occupancy of the building instead of the pose. We have added good parking, we probably have some space for additional parking, should need something in the future. Currently, I'm leaving like seven to ten folks on site daily.
Yeah, eight.
Yeah, eight. And we're providing forty parking places. We also look at the existing subject systems, which actually was adequate for the current rolling with this usage, and it is. We actually designed a subject system some fifteen years ago. We do have two handicap accesses to each, one for each building as well.
So, um.
History in the project?
Yes, well, you increased some previous.
No, no, we're just rewinding the existing pavement and the back is going to be gravel. So we've accounted for that in the drainage system, the changes from, it's kind of harshy now.
Um, so, yeah, so the background here, um, it's, he's operated a school there. Um, I don't know to what, you know, hours that they keep there, um, as far as what you're doing inside versus outside. I know, um. Prior to maybe you owning it, there, there was some other uses there, I know it was a car lot at one time, but in between that, it was, um. I know there was, there's some stuff in the file, but I, it doesn't really have anything to do with his use there now.
There were a lot of uses before.
Yeah, there, there were, uh, so, so you, the use there that you have there now is, you're saying it's training? Classroom training?
Yes.
Okay, and also exterior crane training?
Occasionally, yeah.
Occasional, yeah.
Most of the going on there is office.
Office.
Yeah, we may have as many as, uh, two classes in there in a month.
When you say repair in the building, is that your own stuff?
Some, no, we bring in some other people's stuff.
So repairing cranes?
Or the like, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, no vehicle repairs. Yeah, so, uh, boom repairs.
So when they came, uh, in front of us, they, they came back, um, Jim and I met with them, you know, a couple of. Couple of years ago, yeah, um, so there's an open drainage basin, um, and, um. You know, is that something that you designed originally? Okay, um, so that's what's there right now and exactly what he said, he's trying to, uh. Gain a little more ground, I think, and put some of it, the infiltration into the ground so we could use more of the area.
Correct.
That's what we described to, to us when we came in before he designed it.
And I think he, and he also has been designate those different areas.
Right.
On that site.
Yeah. So it's not a change of use or anything like that, it is, it's more, um, site meeting our regulation for stormwater.
Okay. So in the narrative, it says you're requesting that unregistered vehicles be allowed on site for the purpose of training and testing. Is that common in the order in the street?
Every single facility like mine is like that, no.
So the unregistered vehicle, if I think of cars on the road, unregistered vehicles are for. For safety, which is what you're doing.
Understood, these don't go out on the road and they're not cars.
So we have bylaws that approach that, that say, I'm not sure we can do. These bylaws that say you can't have unregistered vehicles on the road.
Can you insure an unregistered vehicle? So they're not insured vehicles either?
I think would be personal property, maybe?
Yeah.
So how many vehicles?
It's probably a half a dozen, like.
And if they're your cranes?
Yeah.
So they're training vehicles?
Exactly.
And they don't go over the road?
They don't go over the road at all.
So it's training.
What condition are they?
Would they meet, um. They meet the OSHA standards because that's what they are, their equipment, they just happen to be mounted on a truck.
Operable.
They're operable, yeah.
So, I apologize. Your degree is OSHA based?
Yes, it is.
Can I assume it's like hoisting license or?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Can I also assume it gets as poor down as, um. Technically, a, a bobcat operator?
Yes.
Needs a hoisting license, I think it used to be half a ton, five hundred pounds, ten feet of. What, one of those, forgot the top, my.
You're pretty close, yeah.
Um, and so that's the, the class instruction.
Yes.
I, I have a discussion with the vehicles, but we can.
Yeah, every town council will weigh in on that, see whether we're off the rails to, um, align that. I, I don't know, it's, it, it doesn't sound right to me, but let's see.
Is it a tool?
No.
It's a vehicle.
Definitely not a tool.
It's definitely a vehicle, and I don't know the rules about.
Yeah.
So I think we need to have some.
Yeah, it's typical construction vehicles, say a bulldozer, you can't register. So, so if you're a construction company?
How do you ensure?
We, we have liability insurance that covers all that, these things don't move. They stay where they are.
That's why I'm asking the question, but. It's a vehicle, we've got bylaws that say how many vehicles, unregistered vehicles you have on site, so I. We have to, it, it, it's like, there's no, you know, it's town council, I'd like to hear what town council has to say about that one. Um, the other thing is, are we talking about peer review, the stormwater?
Oh, sorry, go right ahead. Alright, I would recommend, definitely recommend peer review for stormwater. I have quite a few questions with this, is, so you have cranes or industrial equipment? Is that all located in the back working, testing area?
Yes.
So it's not indoors?
Well, or somebody kept it though.
You're gonna have outdoor fleet storage, so that's gonna trigger land use hypothetical overload. Level standards for stormwater, so you're gonna have to look at treatment containment for that sort of stuff. And making the area gravel, I, might be an issue. I, I think if you look at the stormwater standards, that's probably gonna have to be paved if you're gonna have. Outdoor fleet storage on there to contain any type of spill that you might have. Or if you just rework, I know you have tons of paving areas, just move that stuff on the paved surfaces.
That's easy to do.
But still, the working and testing area, you might still need to trip that, the level standards for that. Additionally, a question for the, the design itself, I noticed that there's a pipe connecting your subsurface system and your. Your basin, how is this working exactly? Is there just, once the basin fills, it goes into the underground system?
Oh, the proposed basin?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, it backfeeds into the underground system, then the water's pretty clean at that point.
Yeah.
So it's pretty easy to maintain.
Okay, no, that makes sense, I, I was, I didn't know, cause I see your abandoning an eight inch pipe, I didn't know if there's more pipes coming into that.
Oh, yeah, exactly, it goes to the existing base.
Correct, yeah.
So we're rerouting.
Gotcha, alright, um, the other thing is, I noticed, looking at your drain report. It looks like this was designed with a four point seven inch per hour exfiltration. Which is not, I don't know where that came from.
I'm not the drainage guy.
Alright, I would get, is that? That doesn't make any sense, I mean, I know you have soil maps that were submitted. It doesn't look like there's any soil testing done, which according to the drainage.
Yeah.
It's just.
I have to double check, it's been a while since we worked on this one.
Okay, understood, I'm, I don't mean to throw a lot of stuff at you, but there, I see some, some overarching glaring issues that are gonna have to be looked at. You know, the four point seven inches per hour, you'd be either eight point two seven or two point four one, calls for. So, um, you would have to, I don't know where that number came from. And I, I think you're gonna have to adjust your, your design for that. And additionally, the soil map that you provided. Looking at the classifications, there's no, it doesn't have any information regarding the actual hydraulic soil group that I have. Um, so, there's gotta be soil testing done in order to confirm, to make sure that the infiltration's. And I do think that a peer review needs to happen, so.
Would you recommend, Rob, it happen after he speaks with whoever did the report to see if they were incorrect in how they did it? And then bring it back to then send up peer review, or how do you want that to happen so that you don't have to go back and forth?
I mean, I would get, I would get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
You know, if that works, I, I don't think that there's gonna be much, I don't know what the, what the reasoning is behind that number, but I don't. It's not the industry standard, so I don't know where that came from, but anyway, you know, it's up to you, you want. You wanna, we can hold off on peer review, see what the drainage, your designer has to say.
Because the, the, what happens, you can go back to him and we're dying, like to just go tweak the report if there is an error, like Rob had said. Or, okay, or, you know, we sent it out to peer review and they find it, which it could cost more to send it to peer review. So however you want to handle that, but we will have to get a scope.
Could you give me your questions and writings so I can give them to my guy?
Yeah, before me.
There you go.
Yeah.
He addressed most of my concerns, probably more concerns than what I had as far as he is. Um, my concern is gonna be dealing with the registration. I think we can get an answer on that.
You're allowed one unregistered vehicle, but if it's training, we need to be to ask.
I, I guess, I, I think.
Training devices?
It's a special case, it's got like cars on it.
There could be.
Yeah.
But I think the optics here are interesting, because we have a safety company doing training. We want to make sure we adhere to our bylaws.
I know when I did a site visit, some of them didn't seem like they would be used for training, they seemed, they seemed.
What do you think we'd use them for?
Four vehicles that were there literally rusted in the ground.
Yeah, and so.
You taking care of any of that stuff?
Uh, the ones that appear to be rusted in the ground are probably set up to be reconditioned. Uh, there is at least one there that is definitely getting reconditioned.
Yeah.
Yeah, that were in pretty rough shape.
They were, yeah.
That, I don't even know.
You'd be cheaper by the way.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't know? I have one boom truck and then an articulating crane. And articulating bucket truck, if, you may have seen that outside, that's in the shop now getting redone. And then one telescopic bucket truck, a boom lift, scissors lift, uh. That's pretty much what's outside, and then inside, I have a forklift, um. Oh, and I have a telehandler outside, and then I have an overhead crane inside as well.
I think my concern too with the classroom aspect of it. Do you do that within the building that has the stairs going up?
Yeah.
Because I think my concern with that too is it, that seems a little unsafe, just, and I don't know what those standards are, Tim. But it just, it, it doesn't seem like it's safe as far as the lighting, and is there a second, you just out of that building? It's a classroom, I just, hand, right, handicap accessible, like I just, I, I don't know if it complies with those standards. For having a classroom facility.
Uh, the outside steps are definitely to code, but the inside steps are definitely not. And I can make it up both, and I'm pretty well handicapped.
It's, it's, I don't, and I don't know this, and I don't know how the board feels like this, but if you're running classes within that area. It makes me feel more comfortable that it complies with the rules that are in place to have a business there that is being run and taught, that, that all people are able to have that access.
Oh, well, we have a second classroom on the bottom floor.
And that's what's required, so, um, if you were to get a complaint and go to the AAB regarding accessibility. You have to provide the same services you provide on the upper level as you do, you, you have to provide it on the lower level.
Oh, we do.
Same thing, so that's, that's the criteria.
Oh, yeah.
You know, depending on how many people you have in this, uh, classroom at a time.
Usually eight is our, uh, limit.
I do consider eight in the bottom floor.
Easily, yeah.
So, so.
Does that include the one instructor?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, it, no, that one instructor would make it nine.
That's right, okay.
Yeah.
So, um, you should be having an inspection, uh, once a year for, uh, assembly. You know, it's classroom use, it's, it's called periodic inspection, uh, you know, if you have a classroom, that's what you should be. Should be subject to that.
Yeah, we, we had them before.
Yeah, well, you should have it every year, so I can get you on the schedule for that.
Fine.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then we can do an overall inspection, take the measurements, we can get you your occupant load and whatever items we may need to fish on.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I, before I open the public, I assume we should people here that have questions. I think we should hurdles we need to overcome, I don't think they're insurmountable, but you, you have period. You need to look at the registration, how we look around that, and the building itself. The building itself, we need a, we need inspection, I think.
So he's gonna have to apply for this, that has not happened in this, so let's, let's, uh, he's here for drainage.
Yeah.
So he will have to, if he's holding a classroom, uh, he does have to get a yearly inspection, but that's beside the question. He's gonna have to do that to comply, but, you know, as far as this goes, I think the important thing is here is vetting the cell, get your period view. And, and checking these calculations and make sure it works, this, this is an existing business, you know, um. A lot of, uh, you know, unless there's a complaint made where there's a, um, saying, someone saying, hey, I can't, I can't access this. You know, safely, that's where, that's when it starts, you know, um, that it should be looked at, and that's, that's how you get into that thing.
Well, that's separate from this.
That is separate, that is separate, he has to be.
Are we getting any draft complaints or anything like that?
No, no. So this all started because he wanted to change his drainage.
Anyone from the public here?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Mike Sussli, I agree, drive, is, is gonna be any change of the appearance from the road? I know you mentioned forty parking spaces, is that what it'd be, those forty parking spaces going to be in front of the building?
No, no, we're just rewinding.
So from the road, there'll be no change?
There will not be any of it.
The, the spots would be typically. We'd be looking at the, you know, typical development plan, we'd be looking at fence and. We, we, again, that, this is beyond this. Are you adding more parking right now?
No, it, the amount of cars that are there today are as many as we're ever gonna have. Mo- most of our training, I'd say ninety-five percent or more is not done here.
On their site.
Yeah, yeah, we're all over the country.
How often, how often, how many times do we, we conduct training?
Oh, no, it's only once or twice a month. Yeah. So you, you can drive by there seven days a week and look at the cars, it'll be pretty much the same every day.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you're only there twice a month for training, why do you need more training space?
When, when, when I.
Right, but he needs more training space because he need, he needs to change the drainage so he can have more training space for the two classes a month that are on his site.
That, that's a fair question, can I answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, on, um, uh, given, um. Training that we do, um, we'll have a class and we'll have, um, crane operators come in and they're gonna run two different cranes. It's so much easier for us to have a course set up in two different places than to have to set up a course twice in one place. That's pretty much it.
Okay, but again, that's not, that's not.
We're here for drainage, yeah, it's not changing anything, but, you know, the neighbors do have concerns, so.
But you are changing that, because you're changing the way the drainage flows in order to give them more space to practice the things they do twice a month.
So it's his existing business, he has the right to operate his business.
Right.
And we don't have the right to opt, uh, regulate the way he does his business, but we're here for the drainage part. And if he's increasing, you know, if he's increasing impervious, that's, that's what we're trying to come to a conclusion on.
Then talk to the drainage, maybe all the questions that we have are related to that, and I know I have about three or four. Can you talk to the specific, I see fifteen thousand square feet of land, it says twenty-nine percent of the land is affected on him. I don't know where the other seventy-one percent is, but can you talk to, I mean, this is a, I realize you're talking about.
Into some of his questions.
This is a business you're talking about, but I am, a lot of other people behind him live on a residential street. There's a residential street on each side, and not one comment tonight has been about residential effects of this, or how the business is tied to that.
Okay, we just opened up the public, we do wanna hear.
Okay, thank you.
Well, he's not changing his business.
Plan for the drainage, that you wanna keep this to drainage, does affect our streets, where I have been flooded, a lot of the neighbors on my street have had floods. We have a, a street that is prone to flooding on both sides of us, there is a water issue. My street, or my, back of my house has a drainage basin, if he adds another one, I expect to be flooded out very shortly after that. So, can you just talk a little bit more, I mean, in all fairness, can you talk to the specific? Plan and how that affects the neighborhood streets on both sides?
Okay. Uh, a drainage basin is there to meter the water that runs off in a storm event. And with size, the new basin, so it's actually less water running off, two hundred feet per second in a storm event. So you should have less water coming off of this property after construction than there is currently. And that's why we put these structures in place, so we're not infringing, infringing upon the rights of the neighbors.
Yeah, that makes sense, can you explain what is the construction, what does the construction of the fifteen thousand square feet entail to put this in? Specifically.
Oh, we're gonna fill in the existing open basin that's right there, bring it up, make it a gravel area. And the stormwater is gonna be channeled into the open basin for the back of the property. And as that fills up, it's gonna go into the underground infiltration area, so the water infiltrates into the ground, so it's not too.
Okay, so I'm the back, again, I'm sorry to do this to this group, but when you say back, that's my backyard.
North side of the property.
So I'd like, can you, so is it like a leaching field?
Like it goes under the ground and leaches into the ground like a leaching field does.
Yes, that's, that's a very good description, yes.
So.
And that's part of the stormwater management standards that does happen, this is controlled by the state public. So it's important we meet the state's standards, certainly.
So there, it's like the thing that's in the corner of our, so, we, you know, the big hole we have that's surrounded, but it's the same thing. But what they're doing is filling the hole with gravel and they're gonna dig a pipe that goes out onto the ground like the leaching field does. Into the ground, from the middle of the ground instead of having to go from the top down.
May I just ask one question, you, you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I, I think I can clarify just a couple of things, cause I know.
Just to make this easier for you.
Yeah, so, as far as the, the state stormwater standards go that Bill brought up is that. Basically, they are not allowed to increase stormwater runoff off their site going into your backyard or any of anybody. Now.
When you say don't allow, how do you know that won't, are you a hundred percent guaranteed that that will not happen because of this?
So let me get to that.
Okay, I just didn't get, well, you're not allowed, didn't sound like it was guaranteed, I'm sorry.
It's not allowed, that like, when you design this, which are specific standards, which I know I just brought up a couple of issues that I saw. Cause I do this for a living, um. Basically, there's certain criteria that they're gonna have to follow as far as their design goes. Now, one thing that I brought up is something called a peer review. Now, what that is, is if you're not familiar with it, it's a third-party peer review consultant, basically the applicant needs. An engineer that essentially is, doesn't work for the town, doesn't work for them, they're just supposed to be a third-party. Uh, review of their design, and there, it's to give a non-biased opinion of the design. We are going to want that to happen to make sure that it meets the stormwater standards that Massachusetts has. So, basically, they need to verify based on all of the design criteria, and there is a lot of design criteria that the state has. That they need, that they are not going to increase runoff to your backyard. So, if you have current issues of flooding, they are not necessarily going to solve current issues. They are not going to make it worse is the key, that is kind of how the regulations work, if that makes sense.
It does, I still don't see in there a guarantee, but I, I do see what you're saying and I appreciate the explanation.
Sure. Um.
That's why we wanted to do the peer review. And we want you to be here when we get the peer review back, they can ask the peer reviewer questions.
Oh, yeah, peer reviewer will have on, on the call, like, I know I'll be asking specific questions, I usually do, so.
So is there any benefit to asking more questions about what the actual fifteen thousand square feet in construction entail? Or am I wasting everyone's time because I should come back when the peer review is done, meaning, I don't wanna hold you all up if this is. Contingent upon this and this has other problems, but I, I do have, I have more questions what the rest of the project entails. So I, I don't know if it's appropriate to continue to ask them.
All we can do, ma'am, ask you questions and we'll find out.
Yeah, you're not wasting anyone.
No, you're not, that's, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
And please chirp in if anyone else has other things to say, but, so, can you explain the fifteen thousand square feet in detail on the map? What, what will specifically be affected when you build this stormwater drainage area? Are you taking trees, are you paving grass, what are you affecting with that fifteen thousand square feet?
This is the area of construction.
You want, you can get up and walk if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay.
That is this area right here, we're not touching any ground up here. So that's the fifteen thousand square feet, it's just basically revamping the area, changing from one kind of drainage system to a different kind.
So that's already existing, you're just changing what's there.
It's gonna be regraded.
So you're not taking trees, let me ask it that way, let's start with this, are you bulldozing? It what?
All the vegetation will be disturbed and struck this. But also for your protection, it'll be a so patient area that wraps this around, some of the soil will run off of this property. And that'll be monitored during construction.
So you're saying you are flattening and taking trees and foliage that are existing that are there?
Yes.
Okay.
It's already offensive.
There is not already an offensive word, can you, can I, can I? Are you, do you know where your house is on there?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Cause I'm.
We're actually, uh, neighbors.
Where's your house?
Oh, you're on the, on the north side.
So where are we here? So that would make me.
You're probably right here.
This is the green building.
Yep, and I think you're right here.
Okay, so, yes, and there's also a house here, and a house here, and two houses here, and again.
Pretty safe the drainage, if you can see what we're posing, a small firm, it's a water that's not going out.
Can I make a suggestion, can you just walk through real quick what you're gonna do in terms of physical, what are you gonna do, dig a hole? You gotta cut trees down, you gotta dig a hole, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be cleared, whole place gets cleared. Uh, we start grading out here to construct the open basin in the back, and as we're doing that, we're constructing the underground infiltration area.
Can I just, those terms mean nothing to people that don't know it.
They go like this object system. It'll be like that area underground, like this object system, the water goes in, infiltrates into the ground. This will be an open basin like you see in most subdivisions in town, the water goes entering the storm event. Some infiltrates into the ground, and some may get over the spillway depending on the size of the storm. The water will not go from here onto your property.
But I am losing all of the, which is not the discussion for tonight, but I will make it noted for the record. You are taking down trees in between houses on a residential street, which is the only buffer between.
No, 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 the trees that we're taking down are in the actual, um, retention part, we don't take any other trees.
It's on his property.
And there are also on this side of the property, not on your side, yeah, we're not, we're not taking any other trees.
So is there a landscaping plan out there, you have another page there?
No, we didn't do a landscaping plan because this is, the, uh, pre-approval was this.
Oh, okay, so the.
It'll all be grass.
Yeah, the original approval that they had, that you had, um, so, yeah, that had, um, a buffer of trees on it.
Oh, they, they exist, yeah.
It's not being removed?
Oh, no, no, no.
But you just said a few minutes ago you were removing.
Yeah, but, yeah, the trees that he's talking about are in, that are actually in, it's a, it's an overgrowth inside the, uh, some original retention part.
I was gonna say, first of all, curious, and I know we're talking about drainage concerns, I mean, to be honest, I've been there ten plus years. It, it's relatively quiet back there, I mean, there's not much, my concern would be, right, we're doing all this activity. Right, and then that's my concern in terms of, there really isn't much activity, you're obviously putting a lot of money into it expanding. For what? My concern is, right, taking down trees, it's probably gonna be a lot closer.
I wouldn't say there's not much activity, though.
Can I need to check for a moment? Um. I appreciate your participation, I think this could go a long way, I know where we're looking within limits. But this conversation is getting a little more in-depth, which is a good thing. Is it possible that you can meet with the neighbors while the peer review is being done to educate them? And so we can do that in another environment to address their concerns, so when we have the peer review back. We're, the neighbors are more educated, is that realistic?
I, I think happy you're participating in that, sure.
You open to a sidewalk?
Sure.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially now, this time of year when there's no foliage and there is not a lot of buffers.
Maybe you can get on the same page, he can tell you what these plans are removing or replacing, I think that's a good idea.
And I, I think what I would like to suggest is that we remove ourselves from that sidewalk, the, the applicant, the neighbors.
Is there a chance to have one, I, I, I would prefer to have one person, is that allowed from your area? I wouldn't wanna hear one thing and have to. Do you see what I'm saying, I just, I don't want them to say something against you or something.
We, we've been on site with Bill, they've, um, showed us everything, but, uh, we could set up a date that works with the applicant. And, um, that everyone, we could just meet on site, take a walk around, he can explain better on, on site and give you a better idea. And, um, you, you know, you gotta be mindful also that, you know, um, you have residential on both sides, you're a commercial piece. You gotta maintain a buffer, you know, you can't go in and cut everything down without replacing.
Well, no, no, we're not cutting, we're not cutting anything in the buffer.
I don't know what degree you're gonna do it, but I just, that was just, you know, uh.
Yeah, I'm open to dialogue.
So, so we can talk about it on.
Absolutely.
Can I ask how much, how much land is being disturbed? And I'm saying that because, I mean, it, it sounds like we're coming in strictly for a, a, you know, work on the drains.
Yeah.
But I'm questioning how, you know, typically if this was a site planned, develop, you'd be looking, you know, conservation would wanna talk to you. You'd have.
It's disturbed now, it's all, it's scrubbed, but there is, there is taller trees on the edges.
I mean, we're, I'm questioning whether this is a full development, I mean.
No, it's not.
I mean, the town is responsible for our drainage pit that's in the corner of our property, so is the town also responsible for theirs? Or it's their private?
His is private, yours is, but that's what I'd like to establish, is, is we're not, we're not meeting those thresholds, I'd like to hear that we're not meeting those thresholds.
A, a little bit, a little bit of history, this, this started over five years ago. And I came to the town with it, overbuilt with this plan, and, um, and he mapped it out. And at that time, I went into the building department because I didn't know where to go, and they sent me to the conservation commission. And they looked at it and approved it, so we went ahead and started with, um, the, uh, plan. And then, one thing.
Prove it through the, an order of conditions?
I don't know.
Cause when, cause they, they either said, oh, you don't need a permit, or you need to go to conservation for a permit, so.
No, they, they said that you need to go, uh, conservation, and, and I sat down with her here in this building and went over the plans. And she, yeah, and she said, okay, you know, everything looks fine, you can just go ahead with it, which we did. Um, only either, um, we ran out of time or, and or COVID, and we never finished. Um, what's left is, um, to clean out the existing, um. Uh, the existing basin, and not, we're not working anywhere else, just there. And that's where the trees are, that Bill was referring to, because it's all, it's just overgrowth.
But those are trees that our houses rely on.
No, 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 watch his finger, watch, watch his finger.
I think, I think that's why a sidewalk would be helpful.
Yeah, see, it's on the other side of the property, it's not, not on your side.
Is there an order of conditions on this, or was there, or there never was? It was never, so, so, it was just, the end was just like, it was just an information.
Yeah, no wells at all.
So, yeah, uh, just to be clear, and I think the site, the sidewalk will probably.
No, I appreciate that, but I'll just, again, I don't wanna keep this going on and on, I hear cranes more than twice a month, I hear noise more than twice a month. I see things in terms of, it is not a pretty area back there, and look at that as, it might be your back of your building. But that's my backyard, it's his backyard, that's a family street, and it does not look good right there now. I also have a lot of water issues, so does the rest of my street. Again, I heard what you said, and thank you for clarifying that, but I still don't see how this is a hundred percent guaranteed. That that is not gonna cause more water in an area that already has sub pumps going and storm drains. And, again, I, I know, but you just have to be confident, we're all here today because this is where we live. You go home at night, that's the back of your building, this is where we live twenty-four hours a day, and those trees.
Oh, those trees are staying, they're not, they're not going anywhere.
And, and I don't think there is a fence up now on our side.
Not on that side, no.
And that's why the concern, especially for thinking of trees and things like that, right, it's to your point, a buffer, that is the buffer.
Yeah, I, I don't know who owns that, I, I don't, we don't own it for sure.
I mean, I, I know we're over here, but there is another residence that I think that goes off.
Actually, I think, I think you're right, I think he owns that whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, um, he doesn't want anybody in this property.
Anyways, I just, there were a lot of issues that we brought up, I appreciate your listening, but, yes.
Would you, would you like to come and do a walk through, I'd be happy to.
So why don't we, why don't we set up the time, Bill, that I can, uh, maybe I'll meet up there.
I just want to make sure all these things were noted, I'm happy everyone contributed, I mean, it's not just a, let's put a storm basin in and let the water run. There are a lot of people and houses affected by this plan, so, thank you.
And then, and then I guess the second point in terms of the gravel and the pavement, I mean, that's after the drainage, but, right, that would be another issue in terms of what we're gonna, what you're gonna be doing. The, the space and, right, is it full of paving and a whole paving company is coming for parking or, I think that would be another.
It'd be a work area for the park.
And where are injury now?
Cause I think gravel, right, that's probably more small storage to expect, once you start paving, I think a lot more activity would be back there.
And will this peer review address the fact that if there's water now, wherever the water is, whether it's pooling? That also lets me think of mosquitoes, thugs, things, environmental concerns, and that we're not there before, and now I have to.
So what are the requirements too, that they're gonna have to do is show the basin drains for the seventy-two hours of a rainfall there? So, cause you don't want ponding in there for a while, cause that's gonna cause mosquitoes and such. So that's one of the requirements, in addition to, I know you brought up that there's some serious issues with drainage in the backyard in that area. As I stated previously, we're gonna wanna see soil testing to see, make sure that the, the estimated seasonal high groundwater. If you have flooding, it's usually gonna be high, we don't want to know where that is, I don't want, you know, we as a board, we're not gonna approve something that. It's just kind of assumed based on soil mapping online, so. That's another, that, there's a lot of factors of safety involved with the design that I think. I think it addresses a lot of the concerns that you brought up, and I, I definitely as we move forward with this, I definitely discuss. Um, and one other thing I wanted to add, this, there's a stormwater management plan or application that was submitted. But this also, it looks like it also tripped the threshold for development planning, there is an application. But this also, it looks like it also tripped the threshold for development plan, there is an application. So discussing screening, if you're expanding any of your business towards a property line, that's totally in our heart. You know, we can, that, that's a discussion, like, it's not just stormwater, you know, there's, there's more items. That we can talk about, obviously, we don't wanna start putting conditions on it, that's what we want to bankrupt you and make this not. You know, that's not our intent, but if there are concerns that the neighbors have, we need to address them. And that's all part of that development plan.
So what, what I would like to. Is, we're not gonna reach a decision tonight. Uh, we have a peer review that we have to do, we have to get pricing. Um, this has gone on for a while, I'd like to propose, um. What's our second meeting in March?
I, I was gonna say that too much, please.
I would say we both, put this up in March.
Yeah.
Is that time to get the peer review?
Yep.
By the way, I have to deal with the investigation in our part, is anything else out there outstanding?
Yeah, it makes sense.
And then, um, come back on the twenty. Maybe with a drawing that shows the buffer and how much trees we've, and. What's, what the neighbors are gonna see, cause those are all questions we're gonna ask.
Right, and that'll probably come about from the site visits, so everyone can see what is going on.
Yeah, but, but we're gonna ask too, so. Could you mark up the trees that, that uh will come down prior to the sidewalk?
No trees.
It's, no, it's not, it's not easy to do, they're in the retention part.
Oh, they're growing within it.
Maybe an inch in diameter, so there's really nothing to mark, it's scrub, yeah.
Okay.
So perhaps around the edge?
Area, what is public, clearing, area.
Yeah. Something like that would probably make more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you thinking about a fence in the back too, or buffering on the neighbors?
In the back, I had proposed that originally, and I was shot down, the neighbors can't see us from the back, anyway.
Who shot you down? Cause, cause.
I can see his trash, his waistband, I can see every single tire on your truck, my second.
I'm sorry.
My house.
Yeah, I, I'm not trying to get down.
No, 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 that's okay, are you behind me or beside me? Oh.
Who shot you down on the fence? Because a fence screening is typically something that, this, a development plan would come in here, if it was a new development, say it's a new business. We'd be looking to screen all the neighbors.
I don't remember who shot me down, I do remember I built the fence up to that part and had to stop there. And I'm perfectly happy we're going on. It's not my property lines, it's the beginning, the new retention part.
We can talk about that.
Yeah. No, but I'm perfectly happy going around, I wanted to do that to begin with.
So what I'd like to do, we have more items to discuss tonight, I, I think I have two questions. Jim, yes, sir.
Mike White, under the eighty-four, was that extension?
Yes, sir.
This was when. Before he turned this into an operating yard for rain, there was a berm here. That berm is no longer there, so that he can get his equipment in and out of this area. And in the heavy rains, I get all runoff into the back of my yard, it's sunk in, it's below grade compared to his. And I have a swimming pool here in a poolhouse, and I get runoff through the. The parking lot into the back of my property, un, in heavy rains. And so, one, I would like to see that addressed when we do our sidewalk. And you had mentioned about the uh unregistered vehicles too. I live right here, so currently, there's like maybe three or four trucks over here that haven't moved in five, ten years. And there's numerous back along here. Are those trucks gonna be pushed over to here, so that you can have an operating yard back here?
Are we talking pickup trucks or big boom trucks?
Yeah. But is, there is two on that side, I know, um, one of them hasn't moved in a while, it's, it's, it's in the um.
Is it?
No, 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 it, it's, it's gonna be reconditioned. It's our only digger Derek, so that's, that's gonna come in. Um, there was, there may have been, um, two there. Um, we have, the bucket truck is there, but that's in the shop right now.
I was gonna say, there's been two there for a while, cause I walk the dog on that street, and there's always a two parked there.
Yeah, and that, right, and the bucket truck just came into the shop.
And then the big boom truck is in the park right here.
That's where we use frequently, yeah.
So the water issue is the big thing.
Yes.
So is, is there a berm, is there a berm there?
Yeah.
It was, it was a berm there originally.
The side berm, um, towards, toward your property, like, that's still there. And when I put up the other berm, I, I assumed that that was gonna keep the water from going out of your property, I guess I was wrong.
The side of your parking lot, it's a paving, you have a cade pod berm in the paving that was taken down to access that yard. Where all your trailers are stored with your equipment, that, in that area, the runoff is coming right into our property.
Yeah, I wasn't aware, that's why I put the other berm up.
Yeah, there's a big berm right here, that was to walk a view of, so it's all going around it and hitting the back.
Yeah, apparently so.
Well, there was, there wasn't any runoff from this area, it's coming down here, so you'll have to take a look at that.
Might have to redo that berm.
Yeah.
I, to be honest with you, I just removed.
It was originally there, yeah, when it was, uh.
Just one, one person. I'll get you in a minute. How long, how long ago was that berm? Five years, ten years, twenty years?
What, the berm? I, I think, quite honestly, it, when we were plowing back there, we plowed it out.
It's in recent times, though.
Yeah.
Okay, recent times, so it's in scope now?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, shortly after Jay had purchased the property and turned it into the, the crane school, that's when that berm was removed.
Is there any fencing between you and some trucks that are right there? Uh.
Chain link, I think.
Yeah, fencing right here.
I put up another fence, the old, right here, there was an old stone wall, and then just a four foot high wire fence. Uh, cause before, this was all there, there were horses back there, and that's all it was. And then, so when he started doing all this, he put a, he built a berm, that's probably like this high, like this. To block, to try to block the view, but it doesn't do anything. I went and put up another fence inside of my property here, just to kind of shield. Everything back there. And then there is, he did put up a fence right along here, a stockade fence here, up to, up to this point. And then I added mine, my yard here, just so I can, to shield and stuff.
The other guy has chain link across the back of his yard, very, the gentleman in front of you, that on one forty.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's only chain link, yeah.
To a point. Yeah, took out here, and then there's like a white uh PVC fence up there.
I like, uh, I'll grab the two last questions.
I, I just wanna comment together, northeast grows out extension in Jay's property in the middle. It all pitches down towards the, the, the car blink that I don't really recall.
That's my end.
And that's, you know, it, it's just the nature of the property, I mean, we're a little bit luckier, cause we're on the high end. The people at the other end of our street, I know, are all experiencing flooding, they have some pumps, things like that, I mean, that's for them to speak. About, but um, you know, it's, there's a, there's definitely a, a strong runoff in that whole area. Um, with the rain, with the stormwater and so forth, and that's, I think that's everybody's concern.
Steve?
Steve Coler, Conservation, so you don't plan a file, uh, notice of intent?
No, there's no.
The current catch basin, storm basin. What is its storage capacity in contrast to the replacement?
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head.
You got instinct, more or less.
Probably a bit more, because by adding the gravel, it's essentially like previous area, so the basin would handle additional runoff.
Now, where is that basin physically relative to the current one? Closer to the western front line or terminal, or same place? The reason I ask, from the Google map, it looks like it's not moving.
The underground.
The storage, the basin.
Yeah, it's current back.
Current one relative to that blue.
Current one is right here, you can see on the climate.
Let's see, you're digging a hole in hole, you're not using the existing hole and filling it with gravel. You're making a whole drainage basin.
That's a bubble ground also.
There's not a, um.
No, no, it's already there.
But he's saying it's not already there, he's saying.
Constructing, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So what you're saying is, this is the current existing drainage basin. This is gonna be the new drainage basin, which isn't anywhere near where the current basin is. So you have to take down all of these trees to put your new drainage basin in.
And it's closer to the residential street than it is.
Thirty minutes, and you keep denying that fact. So you're building a whole new drainage basin where the drainage basin doesn't apparently exist. So that you can cave all of this area, which is whatever you wanna do with it, but you are disturbing the whole back of the property. And take, right, which is what we've been trying to ask, which is what you keep saying, no, you're just taking out the spraggly trees out of there.
I planned this whole area, that's all getting disturbed.
So, it's a whole different.
Thank you, Bill, thank you. What I'd do is offer a suggestion, we, uh, we talked about continuing this to March twenty eighth. You're gonna set a meeting after this?
Yes.
I would recommend that one of the neighbors, um, you'll take your notes, and some of the volunteers take notes. And then we'll come back in on the twenty eighth and discuss further, but tonight we will take, uh, no action. So I would entertain a motion to continue to, uh, march. Have a set max? Um, all in favor? Phil, on it?
Go on.
Thank God.
The motion passes. Alright.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming, we look forward to seeing you in the twenty eighth.
Please stay in the half, what they say.
Yes, yes. Yes, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Everyone sign in, so we keep.
Sure, no, you just do that, yeah, you want, you should name it nine. That would be great. Alright, let's keep going. Alright, babe. We gotta keep moving, we've got two more days, and then we're out of here. Okay, we have an A and R plan, and we have one seventy-five left. Let's get that up, we're gonna do the A and R plan for Blackstone Street.
What a difference meeting makes, huh?
Are you calling yourself nobody? How are you? I'm fine.
The city and our involves.
This A and R, right now, is, it's hard to explain, because we have been advised. I'm gonna start out just initially, that Jim has reviewed this, and he has advised not to endorse it based on. The ability to access.
Cool.
So Lou has a different interpretation. And it's up for everybody to look at their interpretation and see where it's at. It is in front of council, um, for, to get council's interpretation. Just so everybody knows, that's straight up.
Try to do this to Jerry, alright, but that's okay, so my name for those.
It's, it's just an A and R, no, no.
Discussion.
No, discussion.
Uh, for the record, Lou Petrosi for Wall Street Development Corp. We, uh, uh, have agreements to purchase two hundred thirty-five acres. Off of Blackstone Street, owned by three property owners, um, Barney Brothers. S A K Realty Trust and Rosenfeld Concreet.
Okay.
So, the major access to the property is. This Black, Blackstone Street, which is previously, um, by town record, was a public way. Right now, it currently exists as a gravel road. But it's a way that was in existence prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law. We have. These are aerial photographs, I document the way, this is a nineteen thirty-eight aerial. Joe Blackstone Street continuing straight through, um, Blackstone. And, um, and then. This is the town map from nineteen forty. That shows Blackstone Street existing, and then. That's for a. Showing Blackstone Street, now the purpose of these photographs. Are to document the fact that this way was in existence on the ground. Prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law in Denver. Now, the significance of that is that according to the definition of a subdivision. It exempts a way that was in existence prior to the adoption of the subdivision law. So by definition, this A and R. This plan does not constitute a subdivision to man out there. So, if you read the memorandum that been prepared. The first decision that the planning board is, and by the way, I'm not looking for endorsement of this plan tonight. Purpose of filing it was to have a discussion, because it is so tough, you didn't, you know, the agenda, they have a specific discussion, they have a final plan. So in any case, so, the first decision of the planning board is to determine. Is this a way that was in existence at the time of adoption of the subdivision control law? That's the first decision that has been committed. And if it was, and if it is, if the evidence shows that it is, then it's eligible to be endorsed. As a proof of not required. So then the second threshold is that, which is what Jim had referred to as adequate access. The question then becomes, when does the adequate access get constructed? Now, as owners of the way, of owners of the property that have bought the way. We have the right to go in there and construct the way. and make it the access adequate. Our intention is to construct the way according to town standards. If it was a subdivision, but not a subdivision, but constructed to the standards that are in your subdivision control regulations to the extent that they are can reasonably be applied. Meaning, your right of way requirements may call for a fifty-foot right of way. This is a forty-foot variable width. The pavement that you require, I think, is twenty-six feet. Sure, we can put twenty-six feet in a, in a forty-foot right of way, but then you get into grass strips, sidewalks, curbing, street trees, all of the things that might be required in a typical subdivision. Could reasonably, to the effect that the, to the extent that they could be reasonably applied to the construction of this way. The planning board and Wall Street and, uh, on behalf of the owners, we could, enter into a covenant or a notation subject to a, a plan and profile for the construction of the way. That would accompany the A and R endorsement, when and if we get to that point. But the first threshold is to determine that this is a way in existence on the ground at the time the subdivision control law was a- adopted in the town of, uh, in the town of Bellinger. I provided that documentation from the town clerk. The planning board was formed in nineteen fifty-three, or whenever, and then subdivision control law came into effect. These documents, these photographs and the plans that are on record clearly indicate that this is a way in existence in the town. And town clerk has records for accepting the way, um, back to nineteen seventy-nine eighty. So there's one other bit of history here that needs to, the board needs to be aware of. So, oh, twenty-five years ago, the, the developer came in and wanted to develop the subdivision at the end of Blackstone Street called, um.
Matty's?
Matty's Way. By the way, just so, this is, these are photographs of the existing way. Now, access, you can drive a four-wheel drive vehicle down there all day long, no problems. You can probably drive a regular vehicle down there, uh, and have it, it's passable. But I would not, um, consider it under the, you know, guidelines of adequate access for public safety vehicles. So we're not, we're not making the, um, we're trying, we're not trying to say that we were entitled to an endorsement based on the condition of the way today. We're trying to come up with a formula to construct the way so that we deserve the endorsement once the way is, is constructed. So back in nineteen ninety-nine. The planning board endorsed a plan, approval not required, on Blackstone Street. At the end of Blackstone Street. These lots. And these photographs will show, this is nineteen ninety-seven. This plan was endorsed in nineteen ninety-nine. Shows. That Blackstone Street was in the same condition that it is today in this area where the planning board endorsed this plan. That's the gaseous, that's the gaseous, and you can see the roadway, it's exactly what it is today. Now, fast forward to two thousand and one, when Matty's Way was approved. You can see the difference that they constructed the way. This part was the subdivision, these were the A and R lots that were approved by the, the planning board as a approval not required. So what I have suggested from Amy, or, you know, is that, um, you get town council's opinion. I've had occasion to bump into town council on other, on similar topics in other towns. So I'm quite aware of what the determination would be. But my recommend, my suggestion would be that I continue, extend the depth of time that it, for the planning board to endorse the plan. And so, and come up with a, um, I'll have a plan and a profile for the construction standards of the roadway that can be reviewed by, for what your peer reviewer or whoever you want to review. And then, once those, that plan is designed to the standards that, because we would want this roadway to be used separately because of public play coming forward. So the rest of this property, as you know, I put out a departmental meeting two months ago. We talked about, um, the possibility of, you know, some sort of concept for the development of the rest of the properties, two hundred and thirty acres. Those sizable development that were contemplated. So it's important to get the first part right. Get the, get the roadway built according to the standards that, you know, I mean, Blackstone Street now, if you drive it, it's, it's, I don't know how wide it is, but, are there sidewalks on Blackstone Street right now? I don't think there are. So, you know, come up with some standards that we, or the planning board, is agreeable to. We develop a plan and we have that construction plan as a second sheet to the endorsement of the A and R plan. And then, when and if that roadway gets built, that's when they would become eligible for construction, for building permits. Just the same way a subdivision would be handled, but not require a public payment in subdivision, um, process. So that's, um, pretty much how I, what I would want to say, like I said, I appreciate the fact that Amy got me in another native, a busy meeting tonight, and I appreciate the fact that we were didn't able to get in. But, um, I'm open to any comments or suggestions that, um, the board may have. But I'm certainly not looking for endorsement of the plan tonight. And as I said, I'm going to, you know, extend the timeline for the board to make that decision or make that endorsement down the road. And, um, see if we can come up with some framework to bring this, these two plans together. Jim, you have any questions?
Yeah, so I think, um, I think we should wait to, let's get town councils.
I agree.
Town council weigh in on it. And, um, then I think we should, you know, take that and move forward from that and have discussions with you, you know, after, uh, town council gives us. The timing of this, you know, um, you know, when it was abandoned, you know, it was in, in existence before zoning. You know, I think, uh, let's get Amy's take on it and.
Sure, yeah, sure. Like I said, I have no prob, I have no objections to any of that. I think, um, you know, once, when this subdivision, Matty's Way, got approved. I think there are somewhat, some people were surprised that that way is a public way. And I don't know if they patented or whatever, it's available. We can't be responsible for this way, if it's a town way, we're responsible for it. So in order to eliminate the liability to the town, they abandoned the way as a, as a public way. But the underlying rights to that roadway still exist. And as, you know, the case law will point out, the people who have bought the way have the right to construct the way. And based on our title and research, you know, mining on the whole way basically from both sides. But that's kind of what's on purpose. Extending the timeline for thirty days, sixty days, whatever time you folks need.
I would probably think, I think, sixty days.
Yeah. Put it in there.
We are the twenty-one days, correct?
We have twenty-one, I filed it about last week.
It was the January period.
Yeah, so I'm perfectly happy extending it to like, uh, let's see, end of March?
I would like to go into April because maybe we're pretty busy.
So, um, look, I mean, you, the road would have to be constructed and attached to that approval.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So if, you know, if we get an opinion before the sixty days run, perhaps, then you were willing to share it with us, then we could come to that April meeting with a plan. You know, maybe there's some things that we can talk. Yeah, there's some things that we can talk about in terms of construction standards that might be, uh, acceptable. I mean, obviously, if you design it to your standards.
The last thing I want to do is, you know, put the copy form in last year.
You're in charge, I mean.
Yeah, the last thing I wanted to do. So I think we definitely need to hear from our town council. We have a robust agenda for us.
No problem.
So I, I think we're looking, um. What's the first meeting? Count my head, I think maybe fourteen.
I don't want it to take the place of profit.
I think it's the.
Okay. So we do, uh, if you can give us a written document.
Yeah.
Just sending in our, our cue.
April eleven.
April eleven.
Right.
Because they're, you know, I'll find it if we don't have. We need, we need that right.
I understand.
Actually, you probably know how much property I.
I understand.
Of course.
It's just the history. So this roadway around, at some point it was abandoned?
So it was a public way.
Wasn't necessarily a street, but it was an access.
Well, we don't know what the condition of it was in seventeen ninety-eight or nineteen thirty or forty or whatever these planes show. I mean, I've got numerous planes that go all over that. And I have aerial photographs from in the fifties too, that started all this. So in two thousand and one, someone in the town put an article on the town meeting to abandon.
Matty's Way.
Blackstone Street from Matty's Way, which is right about here, to the, uh, Blackstone Town Line.
That I recall.
Okay, now, when they abandoned, and they, you know, they voted to the town, voted to abandon, no problem. But what did they abandon? They abandoned the responsibility to maintain it as a public way. They, they can't abandon the rights in the way. The way, you go to the butt on either side of the roadway, you have the rights in the way. So that never goes away. What they did, they abandoned or discontinued, I don't even use two words here, but they used abandoned. They abandoned it as a public way. So the, they didn't want to be responsible for everything, you know, the rest of the way, the unconstructed portion. So typically, you know, developers come in, they have the way, they build the way, the town then accepts the way that's up to full construction standards. And then there's, you know, the normal process goes forward.
You're, you're saying that way is accessible, but it's not a way adequate?
It's not, you know, even though I don't define adequate access in the statute, you know, it was saying. Court cases have, you know, you have to have, in the discretion of the board, of the planning board, what constitutes adequate access? Pavement with grades, all of those.
So it's really, the, the, the question mark around the adequate. The backwards.
And, and when, and, and the other, because that's first question, the second question is when does the access get constructed?
Oh, is it in existence now or is it being constructed?
So let's say, for example, I didn't want to come and see you guys.
Yeah.
And I said, uh, oh, geez, I'm just going to build this road, I'm going to pave it, grade it, make it adequate.
Yep.
Need all the reg, other regulations. I could do that, pave it, then come in, and then I'm entitled to endorsement by the way. So what I'm choosing to do with this plan is to construct it to town standards. Have that associated with the A and R. And then combine the endorsement with that construction document. And if, or covenant of some sort, it says, no lots need to be constructed on until the way is constructed according to the design, the reference.
I have a question. Yeah, I want to look at the big picture. Matty's Way was, how many houses?
Uh, I don't know, I think it was twelve maybe, uh, let's, I can bring that.
And you have how many as well as that?
I have two hundred and something.
I'm, I'm not a mathlete.
Okay, but let me just tell you, there's a lot of things, you know, the reason why these properties are still here. Guys like, you know, someone like me gets the opportunity to do this because they have problems. This particular property has a problem with eternal problem. Okay, where it's been designated as a hi, a priority habitat for eastern box turtle. Now, there's a, there's a process to go through to mitigate onsite and offsite mitigation for this. Usually it's some sort of a land restriction on a certain amount of acreage. With maybe a financial contribution of some sort or some combination of those two things. I'm, we're presently in negotiations with Natural Heritage, Division of History, officials who allow that. And once we have that a basis of an agreement of some sort or principle, then we can then propose a development scheme that we can come back to and talk to. So, so there are, you know, the, the wetland issues.
I understand that. Horrible board irregardless of the turtles.
Yeah. I, I will tell.
She went to Meryl, but she's a turtle. Here's my question.
Yes.
Matty Way was supposed to be twelve houses.
Yeah.
You're not putting twelve houses in, two hundred and three eight.
Well, Matty's houses, well, Matty's, the acreage for Matty's was probably fifty, forty acres. They did an open space about, now, the previous party that had this property under agreement was doing an open space subdivision here for sixty-five, something like that. And for whatever reason, it didn't get approved. Whoever, somebody, he got tired of dealing with the minutia of the politics or the approval process, conservation, whatever, and he walked away. That was in twenty fourteen. So since twenty fourteen. So twenty, since twenty fourteen, it sat. All of a sudden, I buy Prospect Street from Barney, Barney calls me and says, hey, you'd be like another opportunity to work out some problems. So I'm a problem solver.
Okay.
So I've got this property. So now, um, our game, you know, us, it, it, based on some preliminary numbers, we could do probably fifty or so. After we've, we've set aside our onsite mitigation, we could possibly do fifty or so, two acre lots on the site. Plus or minus.
Okay.
Because your zoning has changed a little bit and. Or we can, as I've talked to you folks before, about some sort of a, um, retirement type community with fifty-five and older and a full consortium of, uh, types of assisted living, memory care, you know, the whole campus, like you said. So those are all like down the road. But for me particularly, is we need to make the project or property financeable by having a base value in the lots.
Okay.
So there's two things that are going to be happening. One is the A and R plan, and then one is a preliminary subdivision plan off of North Street for twelve or thirteen lots. So between those two, twelve lots here, twelve lots there, just a bank of what we financed it out, and then we come and talk to you folks about what other ideas the town would like to see. And, you know, we know about the traffic, we know about all these things, you know.
But those are big things.
Those are big.
Those are huge things.
I'm a nice guy.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying you're nice.
I'm, I'm, I'm one guy, I mean.
I, I understand some, but early this evening, we had development in front of us that they worked with the neighbors and cut it down by half. I think they probably police and fire, I'm sure you've been sitting here.
Yeah.
For some of these meetings, talking about. for some of these meetings, talking about what we're dealing with North Street and Blackstone.
Yeah, I, I, I just would like to, you know, believe, I'm, I'm fully aware, we've talked about these at the departmental meetings and so I'm fully aware of the issues. And when we get to that point, you know, depending on what the concept is and you're aware, you know, it becomes a process that we're going to review.
And you should be in process.
Yeah, you're in process, yes. So I'll, I'll.
It is at town council now, so once I get it back.
Is Amy or Matt or who doing it?
I don't know yet. I don't know who it's being appointed to, but it is in their hands.
One of those guys.
Right, I think it's Amy.
I mean, we're dealing with someone at Concomma, so it could be someone else.
It could be, so it's there, so we want a motion to.
I would urge you to get a motion. Take it to the.
April eleventh.
April eleventh meeting.
Along with, there should be some word about not acting on it.
Just like, I'm going to extend.
Yeah, yeah, but you will extend it for the sixty days.
We'll provide an extension.
Okay. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, thank you so much. I mean, I appreciate getting your.
You're welcome.
All in favor? Fill on, fill on.
Thank God.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean I was holding you up.
I, I consider this like to be a social event.
Yeah.
I'm a really, I'm a really, I'm really a family girl, the only two people here.
Amy.
Thank you. All right. Come on up, Bill.
What's up next?
We have one seventy-five.
All right, let me read the public notice.
Thanks for your patience.
No problem. Thank you.
Public hearing, one thirty-five North Street. The applicant and owner, James and Tony McGrath, submitted an application for special permit for that lot subdivision. The premises are located at one seventy-five North Street between Bates Street and Irene Court in Bellamy. Right, so plus or minus twenty consortium. So the access map fifty-eight, there are seven. Zone agriculture. The plan is to repair by land planning. Amy, can you give us a brief overview?
Basically, you also have along with this application an A and R plan that you have to act on. So which one do you want to do first?
I think they're all kind of, you know, married together.
All right, well, fair, explain.
Good evening, folks, thank you.
I apologize.
James McGrath.
An applicant and owner of, like, twenty years or something, right?
Correct.
Tim built this house, so he acquired it early two thousand. The proponent of the divided lot property, which is two properties, we do not have adequate frontage for two conforming lots, so we have assets prepared for a special permit for back lot division. Lot one seventy-five fully meets all zoning, area, frontage, all that sort of stuff. In the back lot, as I thought, you have frontage fifty required. Of course, agricultural zone, hundred and sixty thousand square feet of area, we have like six hundred and sixty-nine thousand square. So meets all the criteria, as far as I know, for a back lot. We did show a potential house and a potential barn, just so we can show that we have the space to construct them. There's about the wetlands on the property, which we have a flag, so those are real wetlands. We've also been soil testing out here, so we can check the viability to construct a home.
Folks, my daughters are getting at the age where they're going to be looking for a place to live. We have the land here, so it's going to be for either myself or one of my daughters.
So I get I see a dashed line. It's just lot one seventy-five and lot eight. Okay, this is the new one.
Yep.
All right, nope, I got, I'm creating one more dwelling, right?
Correct.
I am the.
Reading speed coming up in North Street too, right?
I'm sorry, sir.
Correct.
Yes.
Lot, lot one thirty-five needs a shape factor? Yeah. And actually, I drew the lines on me if we should do the cutoff. And I put a lot of shape back on it.
Is, is the, I know you draw sort of imaginary lines.
Yeah.
Is there some subjectivity to that? That means the idea of the shape factors to discourage pork chop, pork chop shaped lots, and this looks like a pork chop.
Right, but it does need the factor.
Right, so is there some subjectivity to the, the line?
Yeah, that line could have been in a different spot. We just found a spot that it did work. Certainly, I shouldn't include the frontage in the calculations. But it's, you know, through a frontage.
So you can, as long as you can find a line that works.
Yeah. Yeah.
I've been thinking a lot of A, can you give me what the house is going to be? I know, I know there were two bonds here, but you mentioned a house.
Oh, one would be a house. We actually soil tested two different areas to check, set the viability, one being up here and one back in here.
Okay.
And certainly, we need conservation approval to construct, I'll give you some more details.
And where are the driveway at?
Um, right in this area.
Okay, right by the nine five point nine five, is that correct?
Yeah, right in there, yeah.
All right.
I looked online and there was a building that was over the corner. Is there, is that one eighty, one eighty-three was listed, is that the next door neighbor, McCrafts?
Yes, that's my father.
That's your father?
Correct. It's just a rental, yes.
That was my only question. So has Jim waiting on this one? Any issues?
Pretty straightforward, really, for that.
Second, Nick.
Want to call for.
So, um, just one minute. So, so first, before you do motion, do you want to explain your A and R plan? Because we're going to do two different motions, right? We're going to have to do your A and R plan and then the back lot subdivision?
Right, or they wanted the same in this case.
That's, do you want to?
We only have one plan, right?
Just one plan?
So do you want to do in one motion, the A and R with it? Like, let's just think of how, yeah, is that what you guys would recommend? How we're going to order it? Okay, so let's close the hearing too.
Would you close the public hearing?
Special permit.
Do you see anything that we should be thinking about?
No, no, I mean, it's such a big piece. Usually they're scraping the area and trying to get as much out of it as possible. What is A and R?
Approval not required.
Okay.
Special permit is required.
No, I don't think so, okay.
So the motion is.
We want to close the hearing.
The motion is close to here. All in favor? Brian, fill on.
Fill on.
Nick.
Now we're motion, I entertain a motion for the approval of the A and R in the back lot.
Yes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor inside. Fill on.
Fill on.
Yeah, God. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, folks, appreciate it.
Now, what are we going to do with the signing of the Mylar? I have it in the truck.
Well, go get it.
Okay.
Yes. Go get it.
Appeal period too.
There is. There is.
So certainly, we can't recall, we wouldn't recall.
Yeah.
We will hold.
Go grab it. Right, go grab it, yes, yes.
Folks, thank you very much.
Okay, so we have, I think, the December twenty eighth.
Except the December twenty eighth and February twenty eighth.
I think we only have the one.
Just one.
Yes, because Tina's, yeah, hasn't finished the others, which is totally fine. Okay. A second?
I will second.
Okay.
Nick, on.
Okay, one more quick thing for adjourned. I have the annual report, I know, the draft annual report. Do you guys mind if I just send it to you for just some, just comments?
Absolutely.
And just don't reply, I'll just.
We need to give us a deadline when you need that.
Okay, probably within a week. Yeah, okay, it's pretty straightforward, it's almost the same thing every year. Okay.
Amy did a great job, great job, stuff like that, right?
I don't know, I don't know about that, but working on it. All right, motion to adjourn, Brian, you're on. Okay.